...2011 to order, and if you would, please rise and I'll say the invocation. Please.
Father, we come before you this morning just thanking you for this day, thanking you for being the great God that you are, and most of our Father, we thank you for loving us. Thank you for the many ways that you've blessed our city, Father, and pray that you will give us wisdom and discernment today as we address those issues which affect your people each and every day. Father, we just pray that all we say, all we do today will bring honor and glory to you, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Sharon, let's see, we have, as far as a roll call, we have Councilman Hayes, he's not present, and Councilman Rahm calls last night, said he would be running a little late, but we fully expect him in here shortly. Item four is invitation to public comment. The only item on the, on the agenda today is the ordinance for next year's budget, and at that time, after the council talks to department heads and gets their questions answered, then we'll have a public hearing, which is mandated on first reading of the ordinance. So, item five is new business, is consideration, initial resolution authorizing the assurance of not to exceed $11 million in general obligation bonds of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, provide funding for certain public works projects and to fund the incidental and necessary expenses related thereto. Al, bring it.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I'd like to call Kevin Barnett from Baird. He was our financial advisor in the two previous, or three previous bond issues. We did a $58 million refunding in '09, and then we did another $7 million refunding, and then we did $6 million worth of new monies, and Kevin was present and involved with all of those. So, he's here basically this morning to answer any technical questions, that being market conditions, options that we have if you approve borrowing the funds, so you can address the more technical questions to him. I'm going to start out, if you don't mind, on the resolution that is on your screen there, basically telling you what those monies are for. Now, this is somewhat of a duplication we'll get into later with the capital budget, but basically, this is what I had prepared for Kevin, because, and Kevin, you correct me if I'm wrong, when we go through the bond market, this is one of the prerequisites that they require. What are you going to use the monies on? You don't have a copy of that.
Can we get a copy?
Sure can, but right now, if you just look off the screen, you can see that we're asking the councils to consider $10,200,000, and these are the projects, the 10 projects that require long-term capital. This would basically be over a two-year period, and of course, the dates that I've put in there may or may not be right considering the things that have to happen.
Excuse me, excuse me, just a minute. Ms. Chairman, are we going straight into the capital, or are we going to talk about the projected actual and the budget overview?
We're on, we're on the first item, which is the consideration of a bond resolution. Part of that, I would think, before you address that, you'd want to know what the monies are going to be used for.
Yeah, but my agenda says projected actual FY11, the first, first thing here.
Well, the agenda that was provided to the council, this agenda right here, the first item under new business is consideration of an initial resolution. Then you have a...
Oh, that's, okay, that came this morning, but I've been looking at this one. It was, that came this morning, fly by night.
No, so it was out. It was in the box last week.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
All right.
So, you're with me.
Al, my issue's a little different. If we're going to consider 2.10,2 million dollars, and I mean, there are some great consequences to all of these decisions, I would just like a copy. I know we can see it on the...
Ernest, it's in your book. It's in your book here. This is just a summation.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the book. What you're looking at, the screen's in the book under your capital outlay tab.
This is just what I had to give in preparation for the bond issue if it's approved. The same numbers are in your book.
What page does it refer to then?
It's under the capital outlay tab.
Page six.
In mine, you got your capital outlay stuff stapled together, it's a little past that. You got two pages.
I see.
Yeah, it's in there twice.
Okay. There's a section for the rest of you that may be looking for it, in the back of the binder, towards the back, that says City of Jackson Capital Budget. The only reason I'm bringing this into play right now is, I would think, before you consider the borrowing, you would want to know what the funds are going to be used for. We will go into detail in the budget process as to these uses and applications, but if you feel necessary to ask questions now, you should.
Question, if I might, since I've had a chance to look at these particular bonds that we're thinking about borrowing, for what term, period of time are we looking at?
We're looking at 15 years.
So, it's a long-term, is that what you consider, long-term? Long-term debt?
Kevin, you might address what the normal municipality net issues are for, if there is such a thing as a bond.
15 years would be considered kind of the short end of long-term bonds, typically people will issue bonds for 20, 25, up to 30 years. 15 years is kind of the short end of that scale, but yes, 15 years is typically considered long-term.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just, if I can, try and summarize where our debt service is at this point. And as you can see, we have a rather short term, is what I think Kevin is alluding to. Many cities, municipalities would go out 20, 25 years. You don't have this either, Ernest, but I'm just showing this as backup. This was in the ATA audit report that you received in December, but this is a summary of our debt. We had $58,535 refunding, and then we had $6 million in new money, and then we refunded another issue. And the intent there, this is the key, if you look over in the last column, that's the combined debt service. The intent that Kevin worked with us all along was to smooth out our debt service, because there was a period of time when we had it bunched up to the front end, front-loaded, so that we were looking at $11 million. That's back in '08, '09, when we ended up saying, hey, we can't do this. So, this is where we're at today. We've got, if you look at there, it's about an average of $6,410,000 over this 12-year period. And then what we're looking at doing is borrowing for this particular set of projects, another The resolution is the initial resolution, and I'll let Kevin explain that to you also. You go out with a resolution not to exceed, that's not saying we're going to borrow $11 million. You might take them through, Kevin, the two-pronged approach.
Right, Al. What you have under consideration today is the first step in the authorization process. It's called the initial resolution, as you can see by what's on your screen. What the initial resolution does, as required by state statute, is you have to authorize a not-to-exceed amount that you're going to be borrowing, and you have to authorize what projects or types of projects this money can be spent on. And you'll see in the resolution that it, you know, it kind of goes through for the purpose of and lists, you know, a number of things after that. So, what you do today is you approve this, assuming you do, you approve this initial resolution. It's required by statute to be published one time in the newspaper locally after its adoption, as a notification to the public that, you know, the board has taken this action, that the city's going to consider issuing this debt for these projects. Once you've done this, we will come back at a later meeting with a, what we call a detailed bond resolution, at that point, which kind of gets into the specifics of the bonds themselves, as to the structure of those bonds, as to, because I'll work, what I do is I work with the city, taking market conditions as we advance forward, and look at structuring the repayment schedule in a way that not only is in the interest of the city, but also takes into consideration what's going on in the market at that point in time. You know, you want to look at, maybe some years are more attractive, maybe some term bonds are better than others, so we'll look at all that as we get closer to the issuance date. We'll come back before you with this more detailed bond resolution, which will have the repayment, you know, the years and the, an approximate payment schedule and that sort of thing in it. But today's resolution is required by state law as the beginning or initial part of the process of authorizing the debt.
Let me also give you a summation here, and this comes directly from the ATA audit report, which you received last December. But to kind of give you an overview of what we have done in the past four years, the first column represents payments. In other words, that's payment on the principal, we obviously paid interest also, but this shows that we paid $11,242,000 to reduce our long-term debt. Now, in the interim there, we also went out because we needed capital money basically for roads and other ongoing projects, and we funded three years of capital at $2 million per year, and we borrowed $6 million. So, between the payments and the issuance of new bonds, you can see we ended up net reducing our debt by $5,242,000. And this chart here would show the same thing, but it just gives you the amounts in dollars, where we came from $69 million down to 66, and then went back up because we borrowed $6 million and only paid $500,000 in principal. So, this is where we're at today, where we will be at, excuse me, at the end of June. I put "to be determined" here on the outlying years, because that's dependent upon what you, as the council, decide to approve or not approve as far as this bond resolution and the borrowing of additional funds. Now, also, and you stopped me along the way if I'm giving you too much information here, but I think one of the questions that you would want to know, and we discussed this before, is how we are rated. This was our standard in Coors rating, the last bond issue that we did. Kevin, you may want to comment on some of this, but basically, we're A-plus slash stable, and one of the things that they comment on is low overall net debt burden. And the second page of this goes into a little bit more detail. Kind of hard to show you exactly it, but it says our overall, overall net debt levels are low, in our opinion, that being of Standard and Coors Rating Agency, at $1,854 per capita and 2.9% of market value. The key measurement in there is 11.6% of total government expenditures. In other words, our debt service of 6.4 million is roughly 10% of our $64 million operating general fund budget. And I went to MTS to get some comparative data to see how we stand, and you can see I've listed, and these aren't from Tennessee in some cases, but they're cities our size. Let me start off by saying here, according to Moody's, which is the other basic rating agency, I think there's really only two or three left, Standard and Coors and Moody's, the median on a city with a population of 50,000 to 100,000 is 8.9%, so let's just say 9%. If you've got a $60 million budget, operating expense-wise, which we have a 63, and you came in right in the middle, you'd be right at 9%. Cities like Alfreda, Georgia, Murphysboro, Plarksville are way up at the top end of this spectrum. Some of the ones that you'd expect, like Chattanooga and Germantown, are on the lower end. We're right in the middle. We're at 10.65%. So, and again, Kevin, I'll ask you to comment here, but I think as far as how the market looks at us, we would not be considered a high-risk, and we would not be considered debt-loaded for 20, 25 years. Ours is basically short-term.
That's exactly right. What, what you have and what you've seen is, and in the Standard and Coors comment in there, they're referring to is, you know, the City of Jackson has a fairly rapid payout schedule on your debt, in the sense that it's all paid off in 2024, which is almost unheard of in today's world. So, that's, you know, what that means is you're not extending maturities like a lot of people have in order to cash flow and meet needs and demands. You've been able to pay your debt on a pay-as-you-go basis without putting it all, deferring it all, and stretching it all out into, you know, very long-term amortization. So, that's a, that's an enviable position to be in, and it's, it will help you going to the market. Market will look at this, rating agencies will look at it very favorably. I mean, it's a, it's a lot better position to be in than trying to come back and say, you know, we've got all of our debt stretched out for 25, 30 years, because that's what we have to have in order to make our annual debt service payments.
The other ratio, and Frank, you will remember this, when we developed our debt policy, we set, and I forgot to bring it, but I believe it was like 24 or 25% as the ratio of debt service to property tax.
It's 23.
Right. And we're right at...
We negotiated all of that, yeah.
Okay. Better memory than me, but we're, we're below that. So, the two measurements that, when it talks about, when they talk about per capita and things of that nature, that really doesn't get down to the nuts and bolts of what we can afford, and we determined when we did that debt policy, that we couldn't afford any more than a 24% ratio of debt service to property tax. Our property tax and payment in lieu of tax, as you'll see on the pie charts later, is roughly 32, 33 million, and we have a debt service of 6.4 right now. So, you can see that we're at about 20, 21%, something of that magnitude. Now, I know I've thrown up a number of different charts here, all for the intent of trying to let you know where the bond market places us as A-plus slash stable, and what they say about us, and where we have come from in the last four years, with a net payoff of 5.2 million. It would be our intent, before we go to the market again in two to three years, we're paying off roughly $4 million a year in principal. If we borrowed a $10 million offering, we would almost have repaid that in the next two years before we would have to go out again.
Okay, any, any questions from council as to the resolution? Councilwoman Wallace. Councilwoman Wallace.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Wallace has recognized. Councilwoman, don't mind. Go ahead.
Okay. Interest rates, approximately, what interest rate do you think we're looking at? I mean, I know that's...
Today, we're somewhere probably between 3.5% and 4%.
Okay. And, and Al, you're saying that this should cover us as far as capital outlay for three years?
No, it basically is, if you look at the dates on these projects here, what I'm calling special or long-term projects necessitated by the annexation or the police radio situation is software-related, and the police vehicles is, you know, depreciated over X number of years. Basically, this is a two-year plan. Now, in two years from now, hopefully, we won't have all these new projects. We would be back to our normal capital of street resurfacing and, you know, replacement of scoreboards, et cetera, in parks and rec, and we hopefully would not have to go out immediately. We hopefully could stretch it to three years.
Okay, so two, maybe three years, and then we go back to the two or three million, possibly? I mean, I realize that's...
It's hard to say, right, Mayor, but I mean, these are exceptional projects.
Okay. And the last question I had is the repayment schedule we're looking at, are we looking at, at paying these evenly over the next 15 years, $7,000 a year or so, or...
That's what Kevin is going to be working with us on, because we literally can't afford, you know, we said that we worked hard here since 2009 to smooth out our debt at roughly $6.4 million. We could stand another 500, 600,000 in annual debt service payment, but we wouldn't be able to, in my opinion, just to do a fully amortized rate, you know, going from zero to the 10.2 million.
So, so we're looking at maybe skewing it, throw in a higher percentage of the payback, 15 years down the road then?
Something of that magnitude. Kevin's going...
What, what I will be doing with Al is, like I mentioned earlier, as we get closer to the actual issuance date, which I think Al's anticipating will be sometime later in the summer, I guess July and August or something, so as we get closer to that date, and, you know, market has been changing rather dramatically here of late, you know, from week to week and day to day, and within day, morning to afternoon, sometimes it seems like, but, you know, as we get closer to the issuance date, I'll sit down and run various scenarios, because, you know, you get into, all the payments are based on rates, obviously, at, at that time, and so dependent upon, you know, where rates are, how the yield curve is, you know, if longer rates have come down, maybe we can push more out longer, because rates aren't, but if rates go up on the longer end, then maybe we, you know, so I'll be looking at trying to tie all that in, is, you know, you just go through and run a bunch of different scenarios, using actual rates at that time, layering, you know, new principal payments and interest payments on top of the schedule that Al just showed you with the level, to see what we can come up with that will hopefully be as minimal of an impact to the city as we can. I mean, that's obviously the goal here is, is, you know, but it all gets into maximizing the city's, you know, into the market. I mean, you want to go into the market to get the best rates that you can, so you don't want to, you know, you want to structure around that, obviously, and try to take advantage of it if there are certain years and terms that are much more favorable in the market at that time, then we'll try to structure around that, because that'll lower your payment for those, those years, that sort of thing. I, I made it sound a little more complicated, but, you know, that's just part of what we do, is, is kind of help you structure all that, and maybe we come back once it's all said and done, and we have a, you know, more level payment, or maybe we come back and we have kind of layers of, as we go forward, you know, we start off smaller, build up gradually over time, but we'll, we'll do that by, by using actual rates as we get closer to, to come up with those numbers.
Councilman, be counted.
Al, we, we're talking about the financing of the bonds and everything, but I would like to get a summary of the capital item, the 10.2 million dollars. I see what we have here with respect to what we want to use the monies for, but I hadn't heard any reports or anything on, on these projects, these capital item projects. That's when I said in the beginning, looked like we're going here and then going back.
It is in here. It's in a different format.
Yeah.
I think Ernest is probably...
I apologize.
But we'll be glad to get you this list. And what I want to stress here, and I think Kevin has already stressed, this is just the initial bond resolution. This doesn't say we're going to borrow 11 million. It doesn't say how we're going to do it, but we really, the reason it's the first item on the agenda, we can't go into the budget unless we have some, quite frankly, approval on this as to how we're going to fund the capital. We may decide we don't need to borrow 10.2 million. Maybe we've got enough in our fund balance to only borrow 8 million.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
We're, we're going to do whatever is best for the city, the citizens, but we do have to get this out on the table, and as Kevin said, I've already published this public notice on this resolution, but then I have to go back, and I think, Kevin, it's what, 20 days, that if someone wanted to get up a petition, a citizen, and protest this, you know, that's by law, we have to do that. But before we would borrow any money, we would be coming back to you with a second resolution that would be detailed as to here's the rate we're going to pay, here's the term, you know, is it going to be skewed towards the end? How are we going to do this?
You know, I guess I can assume that as we go through the budget process today, that we'll hear about the finite components...
Yes.
...of, of each of these items that's in the capital from those department heads who will be in charge of those capital funds, so that would be a, a good time, I think, to ask about the minute details of how that money will be used.
And this is just one way to pay for it.
Exactly.
Right. It would be one way. It would be probably considered as the normal way, but we may look at out-of-box situations.
Okay. My, my question's a little different, I guess. So, I, I guess the flip side of it is, then we are anticipating, we aren't anticipating any significant capital outlays in the next year?
Oh, no, we are.
Okay.
Right. If you look at, see, this, I said was the two-year plan.
Right.
If you look at Scott's paving needs, for example, number five, we're looking at spending roughly $2,300,000 this year on street resurfacing, so that it does encompass this year...
Okay.
...and the following year. Now, Scott may decide to skew that towards the second year, or maybe because of the necessary needs, he might have to skew it towards the first part.
So, then we're not, not considering in this issue any significant capital outlays for two years? Is that correct?
I'll make sure I answer you correctly there. In this particular monies that we're talking about funding, this covers this year. You see the Quint Fire Engine?
Right.
That's projected that we will have placed an order at least by September. The police station, fire station for the annexation is something that we have to address, and we, until we get it built, I just estimate it March of 2012.
So, we're not looking...
It's not really, when I say long-term, people would think five, 10 years.
Right. Okay. All right. That's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, any other questions from council as to content of the resolution?
One quick question. We're not long-term debt. We're normally borrowing for long-term items. Motorola radios we got on there, what's the useful life of those things? Are they 10 or 15 years or...
I might ask Karen to address that. What would she say as far as the...
Very much. Very, I'd hope more with Motorola, I would say probably 15 years on those. What the life expectancy has been.
So, the ones, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So, the ones we have now have lasted 15 years?
Yes.
And I think when we get to the police section, Barry and the chief will address, and, and these are not just for police, this is fire and police. I don't remember the breakdown.
And other city departments as well. Public safety is fire and police, but there are some other departments, such as traffic signs, street engineering, that also have some radios, just not as wide as public safety.
And one more question, then, of course, the police vehicle replacements, their lifespan is that 15 years as well? Yeah.
Barry, why don't you come out here a second, Barry, because that's a big item on here, if you don't mind.
I wish.
Some of them have, man.
I think the item that's being questioned is 32 police vehicles.
Definitely not 15 years, I'm betting.
Okay.
But basically, how often do we try?
Every four years, three or four years.
We try to roll them every three or four years?
Yeah. When they're in patrol, they're, they're getting 30, 40, 50,000 miles a year on them, easily.
Okay, thank you. That was relevant.
Okay, any other, any other questions from council on the resolution?
I did have a couple of questions, of course, of the upgrades, the police administration building. Who is, Barry, you could be involved with that one. Who is, Barry, you could be involved with that one?
Chief Henry?
Yeah.
Can you come up and address that?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Morning, Mayor and counsel.
Good morning. Yeah, you've got some, we've got some upgrades to the police administration building, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just a rough idea of what that's going to be about.
I guess you might say as far as going in the whole face of the inside of the facility itself. And then there are some, since we're going to be moving out into the East Main location, of course, there'll be some other units that will be comprised in the rest of the building. And we've already had an engineer to come down and look at the structural components. They'll tell us where walls, things of this nature can be moved to make better use of that facility. So, we're looking at it probably entailing that kind of cost in order for us to do so.
Most of this is either engineering costs or construction costs itself.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel as to the resolution? If not, is there a motion to adopt?
Shall move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Additional discussion? Not counsel, please, but...
Six to... Yeah.
Okay, do we have a count down there?
We're working on it, man.
Okay, all right.
The count is five to one.
And one abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
One abstaining, I'm sorry.
Harvey?
Okay, we have five, yes, one abstention.
Charlie's not here.
And... One, no.
We have one abstaining, five, and five yes and one no.
Thank you very much. Item six, let's go to first read, consideration of ordinance for the 2011, 2012, fiscal year operating and capital budget. Thank you, Karen. And Al, you give, you want to give an overview here and then we'll start calling in Karen.
And I think now I understand Harvey was looking at this agenda here, which was the sub-agenda.
Yeah. See, my, my thoughts were that new business would come after first reading.
Okay. Here we go.
We have to go through the bottom first. So, now we are on the budget first hearing. And I prepared a little agenda here, which we will try to follow. Obviously, you can call on any department heads at any time for question and answer. It should be relatively simpler this year because, basically, if you looked at the first page of the ordinance, there aren't that many increases. In other words, basically what we did, I start out and develop a revenue budget. And then with Karen and Sam's help, we go through the non-controllable expenses of employee benefits and TCRS pension, et cetera, and come up with a number that we give each department. And then they can spread that over the various line items as they see fit. But basically, it's a no, no increase budget as far as the monies that were given to them from Karen, basically, from last year. So, what we want to do, basically, I'm going to start off and do just a little overview of where we are right now and where we've come from. You can stop me at any point in time. And basically, it's just to give you... We okay?
Yeah, checking on the heat.
Oh, yeah.
The heat, yeah, right.
We don't need the heat, I need air.
No, Karen and I don't need it either, so.
I know.
A little less heat.
That's part tripping down up here.
I think it's always good when we look at a fiscal year budget that's out in front of us to look at where we're at right now, where we've come from. You get on a monthly basis, Karen sends you the financials, the statements. So, they would have through April now. And you have to realize that our revenue stream as far as sales tax and state shared taxes are two months behind. So, at any one point in time, you look in the December timeframe when we just received our tax revenues, some property tax, and you're going to see we're in a very positive situation. You look at the period of May, June, July, those type of months, we're going to show negative on a monthly result because we don't have that mainstream of property tax revenue coming in. But basically, when we put together last year, the year we're in right now, we had looked at roughly two hundred thousand positive if you exclude grants. And, of course, we didn't, at the time, we had flood coming from the May of 2010. We had flood expenses. But ignoring those non-controllable items, we had looked at a two hundred thousand positive position. And we actually called it, to plug it, we did an unanticipated expense. Then, basically, what has happened during the year where we think, and this is a conservative projection, but what we see out of the first ten months of the year is that revenues are going to be up about six hundred thousand. And expenses, again, excluding grants and the flood expense, will be down about a million two. So, in a perfect world, we would come in at a projected two million dollars excess revenue over expense, which would be a very good position to be in. On the capital fund, we started out, again, excluding grants with about three point six million. We increased that through budget amendments, the most recent being the police annex building down on Main, which was about four hundred and seventy-five, rounded five hundred thousand of the seven hundred thousand. So, we're talking about projected FY eleven capital of four point three million, again, excluding grants. And let me just take you back to, again, the ATA audit report and refresh your memory as to what happened when we were sitting here a year ago at this time. We projected about a two million dollar plus. And as you can see where I've got the check marks, we actually came in at three million six ninety-five nine eighty-two revenue over expense. And then by transferring some monies from the Health and Sanitation Reserve, which should have been transferred, really, in hindsight, years ago because they were there for the landfill, which we sold back in oh-five. So, we had three million five coming out of the Health and Sanitation. To make a long story short, we increased our general fund by six million six hundred and thirteen thousand nine eighty-two. We had a beginning balance of nineteen million. So, on June the thirtieth, a year ago, 2010, we ended up with twenty-five million in our general fund balance. Now, you have to understand, that's not something that's there every month. As Karen can tell you, as we get into the, the dry months, July, August, September, and even October, before we start getting our tax revenue streams, that number goes down, it plummets. And then on top of that, when we have something like a flood, we end up taking, you know, four or five million dollars out of that fund balance. So, just because we look like we're in a good shape there, that's, that's not an over or accepted limit, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Of that twenty-five million, you can see that we do have, again, out of the ATA audit, the biggest reserved amount is the Fund for Sales. And then we have various other small funds. So, we get down to an unreserved, undesignated amount of twenty-three million. And then that ties to the twenty-five million that, that I just presented to you. So, that's where we were a year ago as far as fund balance. This is where we're projecting we will be this year, two million dollars to the good. And then let's take a look at our fund balances over a ten-year period here. Because this basically is, is what it's all about. The general fund, and Karen, you can comment on some of those lean years. But back in oh-three and oh-four, when we had tornado damage and when we were trying to pay larger amounts on our debt service, we got down to some very low critical amounts of three point seven, four point eight in our fund balance. Then in 2005, you start to see the effects where we sold the landfill and made quite a healthy profit on that. And as we rolled those monies into the general fund and we started really tightening down on expenses when Mayor Gist came in, especially in the, the public buildings area, et cetera, where we were losing significant dollars. And we, we came up to a very healthy twenty-two million dollars. And then in oh-eight, which, if you remember, oh-eight was a bad year for the United States in general. In the fall of oh-eight is when the stock market basically plummeted and the, the jobs disintegrated and we became high unemployment rate, et cetera. So, we, following everybody else, we had to dip into our fund balance and we came down in oh-eight. That was a year specifically when we were like six million dollars expense over revenue because we were trying to pay eleven million dollars in debt service. We were still recovering from the tornado. So, that's why, as I said before, you, you have to have a nice fat balance in order to absorb these ups and downs. The special revenue funds, basically, over there would be Health and Sanitation. And then the debt service, when you look at the amounts there, it's really superfluous because when you borrow money, you bring it in through the debt service and then you spill it out to capital and other, well, capital is the, the basic place it goes. But just because you see ten million dollars there, that was just monies that came in and then were being dispersed to capital on an as-needed basis. So, that's somewhat a summary of where we, the city of Jackson, were a year ago, where we are now, what we're projecting, and a ten-year history of where we had come from. You can see the, the highs and the lows. And over the last, well, last three years, we have made significant progress in keeping our fund balance up to where we feel comfortable as far as natural disasters happening and other things that might require significant monies. Any question on that before I get into the, the revenues?
Mayor, I've got a couple of general questions.
Sure, go ahead, counsel.
I may ask, I, I asked you this question earlier, Karen, but it may help the rest of the council to understand that the year-to-date totals in our budget number cover approximately ten months.
They do. Your budgets were printed on May the sixth, so almost everything from April would have been included in this with the exception of some journal entries. All of your revenue through April will be included. All of your payrolls and your utility expenses will be included because these were printed May the sixth. And I think you received your financial statements May the twelfth or thirteenth. So, there were a few adjustments, interest and things like that that had not yet been posted. But for the most part, everything is there through April thirtieth.
But we also have to remember that on two big items, sales tax, which is almost twenty percent of our total budget, we're two months behind. In other words, what is happening at the cash register today, we will not see until July as far as our revenues. In the same way with the state shared revenue, which is about seven and a half million dollars there.
TCRS, what percentage of our salaries? I, I guess TCRS and total benefits, probably what percent of our salaries is that?
That, I think we calculate it's about forty-two percent total salaries.
Forty-two total? Okay. Is there a salary increase in the budget we're looking at?
There is none.
Okay. Uh... Do you know the, the forty-two percent total? Do you know what percentage of that is TCRS?
Uh, remember, we have two rates. Public safety, right now, we pay twenty-one point three percent. And for the rest of the employees, it's seventeen point five, I believe.
Okay.
It's three and a half more for the public safety.
And, and lastly, I guess, we're looking at overall budget, where we're budgeting to spend about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we're planning on taking in for the year, coming from fund balance?
No, I just put that up. We're looking at being two million dollars to the good after everything is closed out, excluding the flood.
Okay, now, I'm talking the, the next year's budget, 2011, 2012 budget. We're budgeting, spending eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than we're taking in.
It's a two-pronged situation. We're looking at being four hundred thousand to the good on strictly operations, you know, all the various departments. But then we are using eight hundred and some thousand dollars worth of capital monies drawing from the general fund.
Okay, I'm just looking at the, what's coming from fund balance in our budget shows eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Right. And that is, the point I was trying to make was to differentiate that from spending on police, fire, and health sanitation. That's monies that we are pulling from the general fund for capital for the small projects. So, it is a draw on fund balance, but if you look at strictly...
Okay, we're drawing it to pay for some of our capital expenses then.
Right.
Uh... But the bottom line is, is we're, we're using eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars of our fund balance in this year's budget then. Okay. Okay.
As far as the operational out, are we below or above where we need to be at this point?
Well, we would, if we had our druthers, we'd like to be in a positive situation. But we're right where we think we should be in order to get to that two million dollars plus when the two months where the sales tax and state share taxes are accrued. Now, Karen will also accrue expenses, but not to the tune of those revenue numbers. So, yes, we're, we're where we should be. Let me just put up one other situation, might help Randy's question and yours. This is a monthly report that Sam Dawson does. And then included in there, he's highlighted the flood expense. So, the flood that we had in May of 2010, we incurred two million dollars worth of expense in last year, in oh-ten. So far this year, Karen, you help me out if I misstate anything, we've incurred three million. So, a total of five million. We've covered a million dollars on our TML insurance. We got one reimbursement on a small project from FEMA. That's all we've seen so far. From TDOT, we're going to get eight hundred and twenty-six thousand on some road projects. So, that leads us down to, right now, I guess you'd say, our exposure is three million. We've filed claims with FEMA, some of which have been denied, some of which are in the process of being reviewed. And Mayor, we did check on Friday, your signed contract and everything. It, it still has to go through what they call an execution. And they say that's going to happen any day. So, we should start receiving funds, the first numbers that were on there, and I gave this sound, was about seven hundred and eighty-three thousand on the large projects. But that just breaks down to where we think we will be. We're going to appeal the Haring Grove Bridge projects, which they didn't want to allow us very much on. And Ullman Arena, which they thought was covered by insurance, and it wasn't to the full amount, to the full extent. So, we should, we've got a lot to happen here in the next, well, it'll probably be a year and a half before we really settle FEMA. But the TDOT portion, the eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, we should get very quickly. And then seven or eight hundred thousand of the large projects and about two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand of the, the small projects. But when you're looking at the statements, Randy, unless you go to that line item for flood expense, you know, it'll show that we're worse off than we actually are if these things happen. Okay?
Let me, may I ask a question?
Sure.
All right. So that I understand this a little bit better, we took two point two five million dollars out of general fund balance this year. Is that correct?
We took two point two five million.
Out of the general fund balance this year?
No. I don't think I meant to say that.
Well, I'm just...
The, the fund balance where we ended up last year was at twenty-five million, of which roughly two million of that is reserved. So, really, until the auditors come in and calculate our, our year-end, we really... So really, until the auditors come in and calculate our, our year-end, we really haven't changed the general fund. You'd only change these once a year. You had to do four hundred thousand to capital.
Correct.
Well, that's all we're doing.
Yes. So we, we amended our budget by, and then we took out, okay, that's exactly, okay. And this year, we're still planning to spend eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of that, general fund balance. So I guess the question is still, are we taking in, are we, are we spending more than we're taking in?
At any one point in time, when we're in the dry months, the answer to that question would be yes.
Yes.
But when the books are closed and the accruals are made, it would be like if you're running a business, you know, you can go up and down quarter to quarter, but it's where you're at at that year-end that the stockholders are interested in. Karen has to fight the battles in between.
I know those battles.
Okay. If you want, take a quick look now at, at revenues. And our property tax revenue, and I'll show everybody where I'm at right now, it would be page two of the budget ordinance, which details revenues. So you should have this in your book that was provided. It's page two of the budget ordinance. Now, if you look at current property tax, old property tax, which is prior years collected through chancery, penalties and interest, which go up to twenty percent if someone doesn't pay before it's transferred to chancery, you have ten percent penalty and ten percent interest, and tax equivalents. If you add all those numbers up and look at it as a percent of revenue, that's roughly forty-five percent of our total revenue stream. And then you come right down to local sales option tax, which is right below that, that's about another twenty percent. And then if you come down and you get the various state reimbursed taxes, that's about twelve. So you add up, and you're really talking eighty percent of our revenue stream is, is in these areas. So I'd like to, to just address the main areas here. And then, as far as revenues that are from the building department, the various fees, police revenues on fines, things of that nature, those should, those questions can come up at any time, but it'd probably be best to address those to the department heads when they're up here explaining their budgets. For example, police fines and forfeiture is a, is a big number, and that has city court revenues in there also. But let's just talk, if you don't mind, right now about property tax. And this gets back to the situation that we talked about before, as to how much we can afford in debt service. It goes from right to left, FY ten, eleven, and twelve. And as you can see, we're growing at the rate of about two to three percent per year as far as these revenues. We went from thirty million seven to thirty-one four to thirty-two four, which isn't bad. We're, we're an anomaly as far as the municipalities our size in the state of Tennessee. So we're doing very well, but we have to then look at how much of that do we siphon off for the debt service. Back here in FY ten, I still had monies in the debt service reserve, so I only had to take roughly fourteen percent of that pie, that total pie, and put it towards debt payment, and eighty-six percent went towards the general fund. It grew a little bit more in eleven. It wasn't because we had a higher debt service, it was because, once again, I didn't have the, the monies that I had previously in the debt service fund balance. Here's where we are today, looking at roughly nineteen percent. That's the number Frank and I were talking about previously, that we had set twenty-three or twenty-four percent as the cap. Because if we continue to grow our economy, but we turn around and give a bigger piece of the pie to debt service, then that means less monies available for our service, to our citizens as far as fire, police, health, sanitation, parks and rec, the normal function that a city has to provide. So it's a very tight situation. We have to spend capital monies in order to get the equipment for these departments, the police cars, the radios, the fire trucks, the new fire station for the annex area. But at the same time, some people think, well, if it's not spending money operational-wise, if you're just buying capital, you're okay, but it all comes out of the same pot. There's only one pot.
The correlation of the annex area, what, what, what percentage do you see in property tax versus debt service? You understand what I'm saying?
The citizens that live in the annex area, and I'm one of them, we don't really go on the tax rolls until January of next year.
I understand.
So we don't pay tax, not, there won't be any revenue in this year from those, say, how many homes? She's roughly six hundred?
Yeah, six hundred and seventy-seven.
Six hundred and seventy-seven, roughly. We, or they, really won't pay anything until October of oh twelve.
But we got to, according to the bond issue, we got to provide, we got to provide the services, a tune of two million dollars.
There's a little delayed action there, where we're providing the services and the revenues lagging behind. Now, what I wanted to show you in contrast was where we got in trouble several years ago, and this chart reads from left to right, but in oh eight, when the economy was having a bad year, we had the misfortune of having our debt service at almost eleven million dollars, so that thirty-six percent of that pie had to be paid towards debt service, and we can't afford to do that. Basically, the mayor has held us intact for two to three years on expenses, and last year, we pieced together a salary increase, a wage increase. This year, we don't have one planned. But in order to provide the services that we, as a city, must, this number has got to be more like the eighty percent number that we're looking at now. In other words, eighty cents on every tax dollar is going to the general fund and nineteen point three or twenty percent to the debt service. So again, the only thing, only point I was trying to make here is whatever we do with the issue that you've already passed, the funding, this will be what we're taking into consideration, is how much of the shaded area we can afford. Any questions on property tax?
Oh, I do have one question. We're still, we're still getting property tax revenues for this year?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And it's, is, these are all equally distributed, or are they lessening out at this particular point in time? In other words, are we getting...
It's getting down, the low-hanging fruit has already been picked.
Okay, so we're getting down at the bottom of the graph.
Right. For example, this month, we'll come in close to two hundred thousand dollars. We're still a couple hundred thousand dollars ahead on our receipts of where we were last year at the same point, but it's getting more difficult. I wouldn't, I try to talk people out of this, why pay twenty percent interest when you can go to the bank and borrow money to pay property tax? But in some cases, that's not that easy on commercial property. So our big exposure right now is on multi-property land, landlords. Now, one thing I do want to point out, for example, on current property tax, it shows down one point eight percent or one point six, but that's just because that pie chart example of this year, where we're taking less into the general fund and more into the shaded area. If you don't mind, we'll, I'll address our second revenue, second highest revenue stream, and that's local option sales tax. That's the two point seven-five percent.
Al, before we go to that, can we go back on the tax equivalents? I was looking at, I guess maybe it was, it was your, or Sam's projected, I guess, is your projected revenues for the year on tax equivalents?
Right.
Your projected, we're gonna receive around four, four million in tax equivalents? And this year, we're just budgeting three point six?
The three point six, see, I get, the basic input on that comes from JEA. They're probably eighty-five to ninety percent of that tax in lieu of. And it's based upon their asset investments and, and their revenues, it's a complex thing that they send us. And this year, it showed, and I can't remember exactly which one was flat, if it was gas or electric, but that's what I go by. So that can fluctuate just like property tax.
Okay, but that also, tax equivalents get allocated to, to the debt service fund also, don't they? Okay, because that would go down because of that then.
Right. Yes, good point. Going forward with the local option sales tax, and again, this is a ten-year or so history of where we were at. Kind of tells the story, except I wasn't here in two thousand and four, so I don't know exactly why that was up so much, but you can see what happened in our oh eight, oh nine, which is where the economy went flat, and the state sales tax and their associated taxes on alcohol, beer, franchise, et cetera, everything went down. So we actually decreased by four point four percent in oh nine. Started coming back slowly this year, because we budgeted conservatively, we're gonna be up five point four percent the upcoming year. Basically there, the gentleman that the state uses is Professor Fox, William Fox, at UT Knoxville, and basically, that's what he's projecting for the whole state, and I have no rhyme or reason to project anything different for our area. So we are seeing, and the mayor watches every month for when we get the sales tax reports, because that really is sort of a thermometer on the state of our local economy. And let me show you here where we... The lower quadrant down here is the one that I want to blow up. That's comparing ten, eleven versus nine, ten. You can see, we started off with some, and it starts out with September, again, because we're two months behind, so September is really July at the cash register. And you can see, we had some very good increases, three point six, three point three, seven point six, two point two, six one, five one, four, five. February's million three, which is always the big number, is December, our Christmas sales at the cash register. Then, for whatever reason, it has slacked off. We actually had a decrease comparing to the year before. We had some bad weather months there in January, February, which become April, May, January, February, March. So what I did was, I took the same numbers that we got last year in the final three months here, that June that we'll receive, and the two months that'll be accrued, to come up with a projected number. And then, the sportsplex receives the local option sales tax at that designated fifty-eight area track at exit eighty-five, which is a booming area, so roughly four hundred thousand will be transferred to them. That's the way the inter-local agreement and everything was set up as one of the means of financing the sportsplex. So, you know, we've had a good eight out of ten months here. Right now, we're waiting to see what the, the next three months, well, really, the next one month of actual and two months accrual will look like.
Al, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the, on your accounting of, of local sales tax, and, and of course, this would affect the total of the various taxes that we, we gather, I'm looking at a number that says we have, we have year-to-date, and maybe this is, can clarify this, at seven point eight million dollars year-to-date.
Is that on the April statements?
Yeah. Is that...
I don't have that in front of me.
Is that the end of April? Is that the end of April? So we only gonna be garnering another two months in regards to year-end, is that correct? Or is it three?
It would be May and June, plus two months accrual, so you have four months.
Okay.
That's why that number might look questionable.
Might be a little strange. Yeah, it does look a little strange.
If you extrapolate that, you know, it's really only seven twelfths of the year.
So, we're budgeting, if I'm correct, a hundred, one point two million dollars, I mean, is that, no, twelve million dollars?
Right.
And if we took and expanded that out from seven point eight million dollars, and let's just say that's for our first eight months of the year...
First seven months.
Yeah, first seven months.
Right.
I drop about half a million dollars.
Did you factor in what I said was the four percent?
Yeah, you kind of play around in there. It's, it's kind of a, so I'm, I'm, I'm a little, are we shooting a little high on that number? I know that it seems like we may be flat, and the next month may tell us I'm wrong. But I'm also looking at five-dollar gas.
There's so many factors involved, you know, even when we have floods and wind damage, et cetera, it's a shame to say, but that actually picks up the expenditures as far as supplies and...
And repairs, and, yeah.
We're not down to a science, it could be give or take three hundred thousand, five hundred, but we're following trends.
Well, I was just taking the local sales tax, I didn't go through the entire, you know, I, the entire program, but I was just worried about that particular item, too. In other words, I'm, I'm just saying, it might be flatter than we think it is.
Yes, and I can't deny that. We're, let's see, we get the sales tax numbers in the middle of the month as far as the gross, we get the check at the end of the month.
Yeah, my only, my only, my real reason behind this, we had, we had what, one point twelve, one point two million, one point one, two million dollars, twelve, no, I'm sorry.
Twelve million.
Twelve, yeah, eleven point two million, eleven point three million dollars last year, budgeted, and yet now, we're looking at one point, you know, twelve point something, twelve million dollars flat. Are we budgeting in that particular area based upon what we look at, maybe still a flat economy till next year?
And I think you probably could argue either way. So far, we have been conservative in our projections in the last two to three years. The other major area that I wanted to cover as far as revenue, and this adds up to about seven and a half million, and that's the state recovery that we get. And I might even ask the mayor to comment on this, the only thing that we need to point out that's going against us, even though the state revenues are projected up, Mayor, we ended up with our census increasing to what, nine and three-quarters percent, something like that. There were numerous cities that increased double digits, and the pot that's allocated back to the cities on these particular items is based on population. So it's impossible for me to sit here and say, well, it's going to, you know, affect us by X percent. In fact, I did not attempt to factor it in. But this is, when you take these taxes, now, this is basically the history, and this tells the history of our state economies and the national economy. Sales and use tax was down for three years in a row. There, August through February, and I haven't updated this chart, but it would look even better, is up four percent. Franchise tax, which had been down two out of the three previous years, is up ten percent. Gasoline tax, even though we have high fuel costs, has come from negatives. People are starting to travel more. It's coming back. Motor fuel tax, and this is my annual attempt at humor, but the, the beer tax, which had been in a three-year slump, has now come back.
Yes.
And the mixed drink tax, which was, was, actually showed two out of the three years increase, has gone down, so... So as a state, we've, we've come back to drinking more beer, I don't.
Al, Al, you didn't have anything to do with that, did you?
No, I didn't. Not at all. But the point I'm trying to make here is, the state is looking, and you can see these numbers, and they follow the national averages. And, you know, oh eight and oh nine were really tough years. And I think Frank or someone mentioned before, we're not back in a strong economy yet by any means. We have high unemployment rates, the number of jobs created is, is lagging behind. And those that are created, in many cases, are the lower-paying jobs at fast food restaurants and et cetera. But we are, for whatever reason, seeing some upticks that should flow back to the city. So that's the, as far as the revenue goes, the, the main areas that I wanted to concentrate on were the property tax, the local option sales tax, and the state shared taxes. We can approach this now however you'd like to. You know, if you wanna question police as far as their revenues or any of the departments. But it might make sense, logistically, to wait until they're up here, so they don't have to chase back and forth. Overall, on revenue, as we showed you on the first page, we, we are looking at being down four percent. But that's basically because of the, the grants. You come over and police and fire will address those. Here, we're down two million dollars in budgeted grants. Federal and four hundred and eighty-five thousand on state. So I think if you don't object, it would be better to have the departments, when they are up here, address those.
Which, which department is charges for services?
Let's see, the way I've lumped those. I think that's a hodgepodge of accounts. When we, when we get into that further, Frank, I'll, Randy, excuse me. When we have a break, I'll, I'll get you the exact grouping there.
That was up like forty-three percent, I was just wondering what it's for and what it was.
Okay. Now, we, we'd like to, if there's no objections from the mayor or anybody on the council. Do we need to take a break, or do we go into the expenses?
I, I think I've gained fifteen minutes more up here, so whomever is up, if you'll get on up here. Then we'll try to get through that department, then recess for about fifteen minutes.
The departments we wanna talk about right now really will be Karen and I, and then whoever may might question.
Councilman, you'd like, could you have a question?
Yeah, there's some revenue, business license, we noticed a really bad year regarding the business license. Are you, you're still projecting a, a, a better year than that?
On the business license, last year, the state has now decided to process. Whereas before, we were taking in all the revenue and then remitting to the state. It now goes to the state and remits to us. And no city is pleased with the remittance that's coming back, and that's still being disputed by MTS and TML and so forth.
So we may or may not see that at all.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, but we're budgeting a twenty thousand dollar decrease? I mean, that's eighty percent of the budget?
No, that's the penalty you're looking at there, we're not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's part of what Karen was saying, we don't know where those dollars are going, I think they're going into the state's.
Well, yeah, the state gets that first, and supposed to send it on back, so if we come up with anything, we consider ourselves fortunate.
We'd be lucky with the twenty-five hundred.
Right.
Oh, we budgeted five thousand.
Okay, guys.
Okay. Karen, you've got probably the page numbers that we wanna talk about. Let me just say, in general, let's do this on an exception basis, rather than have the mayor address his budget. And I don't know if anybody's here from city court or drug court. But let's look at the ones that have big fluctuations, and that's my suggestion, anyway. Most of them are negatives, they're in the red. And shouldn't really demand much of an explanation. Coming all the way down, legal, let me just explain that one. Since we no longer have the annexation being contested, we reduced our legal expense budget by fifty thousand, which was basically what we had in there for the annexation. Then coming on down to, Karen, you might wanna address information systems, which has.
We've just gone back, we've had some maintenance contracts that we have bid out and gotten some better coverage on. So we've reduced several expense line items within information systems, and that's where you see the adjustment there. No reduction in staff, it's just reduction in some of our maintenance contracts. Some are end-of-life, where we will not renew a maintenance contract. Possibly capital expenses in the next five years with that, but that's where you see the reduction there.
So overall, the total administrative deduction is partly due to this re-entry grant. To address that, or Karen, do you know the details?
We have expended, I think that was a three-year grant, and we've expended some of that. So that's why you see the reduction there, because that was allocated based on first, second, third year. You had higher expenses when you started the program up on that grant, so that's where you see the reduction there.
So almost every area, without getting into purchasing thirteen dollar increase, is a replay of last year's budget. And even to the further extent of reducing expenditures that we know are no longer gonna be there. I think in municipal court, they had budgeted for substitute judge to a very high level. And we haven't had to utilize substitute judge like we did in two or three years previous. So if nobody has any questions on that, that's a very positive area, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar reduction.
I've got a couple of questions. On the, and you may just answer that, on the community services, does that include the judge, or is that something different?
Community services is a program that's under Monique Meriwether's department, as far as where they work.
Neighborhood services?
It's not neighborhood services, it's where they go out and do the.
Okay, the cleaning or whatever.
Thank you, thank you, I couldn't think of the word, the neighborhood sweeps.
Okay, my, my question on that one is that the employee benefits is like eighty-three percent of the total salaries?
I believe that last year, and Sam, you may help address this one, 'cause you worked on this budget. They had an employee that was budgeted in the grant that should've been budgeted in community services. So now they've allocated their employees where they should be, so it was under a grant, Sam, you worked on that budget, is that correct?
But, but the benefits shouldn't be eighty-three percent of the salary, should they? I'm sorry, the, the increase is eighty-three percent, but the, the benefit amount is sixty-four percent of the total salaries.
Okay, that would be based on the salaries that they've got in there, I can go back and check that number for you.
That one, that one just looked odd to me, being sixty-four percent is a high percentage of the salaries.
Should be more in the range of what, Karen, forty something?
And the other question I had on administrative was. The accounting benefits. And I'm looking at, on page seven, I guess. And the same thing on the benefits, their benefits are only twenty percent of salaries. Do we have part-time people in accounting?
We do, we, right now, we have three part-time people, we have full-time salaries budgeted on that. But these employees, we had some people leave, and so, and, and trying to make sure we got people that fit the positions. We did part-time before we offered them full-time, so the benefits decreased for accounting. They perhaps will go full-time, the mayor and I discussed this a couple of weeks ago. But we decided to do a kinda trial period to make sure that people fit the positions, rather than going to the expense of hiring full-time and, and not working out. So that's where you see the decrease this year.
On page fifteen, we're in other general government, is that still in the, what y'all are talking about?
That's what we're getting ready to talk about right now.
Okay, I'll hold my question and maybe go.
General government, might just make a couple of comments there, because city hall is down a hundred and five thousand, down twenty-four percent. And that's basically because we had some one-time expenditures this past year, and mold remediation, and compressor work on the air conditioning. So it was non-recurring type of expense that was in the amended budget. And it's back now to the normal, we hope, normal maintenance-type situation. Karen, you might wanna address employer contributions down a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. But that's gonna be in the forty-one nine hundreds there.
Okay, on, one of the things that we did, I believe it was during budget year oh eight, per Councilman Wallace's request, is we now, the benefits are actually grouped with the departments, whereas before, they were in the groupings of the forty-one nine hundred. So one of the decreases that you see is in TCRS, it, the only thing that is budgeted in the forty-one nine hundred is where we pay TCRS on terminal leave, that is not actually charged to the department. So we've decreased that area. Also, the social security taxes are now charged out to the benefits line item within each department. The only social security that you see in our employer contributions would again be the terminal leave, when an employee leaves and gets their terminal severance check at that time. Unemployment insurance, we have increased a little bit for next year. Again, those are based on claims, we're self-funded based on the claims that come in from the unemployment. Long-term disability has stayed the same this next year. Does that address the contributions that you were asking about in that grouping in the forty-one nine hundred, Councilman?
In the other, other general government, we're budgeting four hundred thousand dollars for unanticipated expenses?
Right, in other words.
What's the grand M, M, what's the M, the rest of that, do you know? Unanticipated expenses and grant something or another?
Now, this, you remember last year, we had unanticipated expenses, which was a line item.
That's probably matching, isn't it?
It's, it's not matching, no, this is what was left over to balance the budget. You'll remember for the first four to five months of the fiscal year, and when I came back to you, if there was an amendment that needed to be done, we pulled from this line item, rather than have to draw on fund balance, and that's exactly what this will be used for this year. That's for those unplanned things that we know will happen, we just don't know what they are at this time.
Good budget.
What I would like to address is the line above that, Randy, where it's transferred to other, it should say, funds slash agencies. And that's on page fourteen. And that's where we have the appropriations to the library, the airport, EMA, Jackson Transit Authority. And some rather large dollars in there. The reason it shows a decrease on the summary sheet is because, basically, last year, we had some transferred to capital there of a hundred and fifty thousand budgeted, so that forces out a negative there. But what I do wanna bring to your attention is, and of course, it's been in the media, and we've had committees with the county, is the TCRS pension contribution. We have in our number, Karen, you correct me if I'm wrong, the, the matching amount for the county, plus we have our share, sixty thousand of that pension requirement. So you, you need to realize what you're approving here, or you may even wanna consider the, the whole hundred and twenty thousand if the county doesn't. I think it came out of their budget committee, it deleted their portion. But we still have it in ours, if I'm stating that correctly, Mayor.
We're still on the agreement, is that correct? We're still on an agreement with respect to the library, is that correct?
Well, the agreement is, is equal funding, Councilman. We would pay fifty percent, county paid fifty percent. And, you know, that budget has not yet been addressed by the full commission. But I think the recommendation is, is they will reduce their share of the operating budget by sixty thousand dollars. Still pay the TCRS, but they're gonna reduce the, their part of the operating budget for the library by sixty thousand. And ours, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, still can, still continues to fund their request, plus sixty thousand for, for the retirement benefits. So it will not, but it will not be fifty-fifty share this year, if we approve this. And I think we'll, we'll probably ask for a, a report during the budget hearings, if y'all will help me to remember, of the committee that's worked with the county as far as the library funding, 'cause there may be some other, other things that needs to be shared with the full council, as to where those, those meetings went, what the final determinations were.
So just as it stands right now, I want everybody to where it has our sixty thousand in the budget. We haven't entered that year, that period yet.
Question, and regards to that, there's always the possibility that, I mean, that the county would, would drop the contractual agreement between the city and, and the county, and regards to the library. How would that affect us, if they did?
Well, libraries are a, are a county function, the best I, I can recall, from, from Tennessee code. The city's participation, and that goes back a number of years, to, to share those expenses fifty-fifty. I don't think that the council and city government is restricted as to what we fund. But the basic agreement was a fifty-fifty funding of a library. Even though it's a city building, it has been for, since its construction. The funding for libraries across the state, I think, falls under the responsibilities of county government.
That's right.
Are we done with the library?
As far as I'm concerned.
On the, the transit authority, the, the budget we're doing for those, was it last year that we paid them some extra money for capital outlay included in their budget?
That was two years ago.
Two years ago, okay.
We recouped that and we're.
Okay, so this is just their regular budget, not including the capital outlay and everything?
And we did not, as you noticed, we did not give them any additional funds. Three items on that page fourteen, if the council can turn to that, I do wanna address. I went ahead and showed an equal amount, I'm talking about forty-one nine hundred seven sixty, which is transferred to CRA District One. We really have no way of second-guessing what the tax rate, you know, it's based on the incremental. Which year was it that was established, Sam, two thousand and nine or ten is the base year? Nine, and then incremental growth, which came basically from that medical office building across from the hospital, resulted in us living up to our TIF agreement there. I didn't know whether to increase, it shouldn't be decreased, but, so I just used the same amount. Then we come down to the CRA's second district, District Two, which is the East Jackson portion, which is just getting started. We put in thirty-five thousand there, not from TIF funds, but strictly as a transfer to them for startup winnings, if that makes sense.
Yes, it's to cover operating in administration, like we do with District One, until their TIF funds come in.
I just wanna make sure everybody understood that. District One had a, a more amount, had a significantly amount more, because we came out of the Lambeth property purchase with like a hundred and thirteen thousand, a hundred and eleven.
Yeah, there was, because of the management of rental properties and deferred maintenance that was needed to be done, and closing costs and things associated with Lambeth properties, there was, there was a little bit of money built into the loan that was, that was for operating and the capital was expensive.
And then the last item on there, forty-one nine hundred seven seventy-one, is appropriations to the IDB. That's the exit eighty-five TIF. And this year was the third year, and of course, exit eighty-five is probably the highest-growth region that we have. So we ended up transferring two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the IDB, who is then monitoring, serving as the focal point, controlling that TIF project, which is basically outside stadium renovation, the back wall and the kudzu area, and then taking down trees, et cetera. The reason I cut that back was that several taxpayers in that exit eighty-five area have now appealed the reappraisal that they had. So, you know, it might go back up to the two twenty, or we might be looking at a lesser amount because of those appeals.
I have a quick question, Al, so relative to the CRA District Two, more money will be appropriated for, for expenditures in the next year?
This is what I call seed money, to get them started. They have roughly, you know, we threw the HUD loan, which was three million one hundred and sixty-five thousand. That was gonna be split, and will be split fifty-fifty between. That was going to be split, and will be split fifty-fifty between District One, District Two. But, those funds are to be used for infrastructure, not startup expense. So, this was just a number that we ascertained from Stan as to what they would need. If it had been a greater need, we would have increased.
And that, that is startup or seed money going into District Two. District One had some seed money left over from the initial agreement to buy those properties. That's what they started with, so we felt like that certainly District Two needed an adequate startup funding.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little confused here. District One, is that the Pringles Park?
No.
No, District One is the Lambeth, kind of that area? District Two is, is, East Jackson Chester?
Right.
Okay. Then, then Pringles Park, is it, it's not a district, it's, we do stuff with that money too. That's what's going to the IDB then?
Yes.
Yes, that is.
We have basically three TIFs.
Yeah, that's, I say, I was thinking District One, and Two, and Three, so it's, it's...
One is up and running, and is at a very hot growth rate, and is doing what a TIF should do. The other one, we've only had one year experience on.
Right.
And East Jackson, we're just starting on.
Okay, so the, the Pringles Park area doesn't have a CRA then, it's just strictly a TIF?
It's just a TIF. It's all a TIF district.
Pringles Park is under a different statute. The, the District One and District Two, which are the redevelopment districts, they're under a different statute. They created the Community Redevelopment Agency and the trust fund, so, so they're, that's why they're separate.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions on general government? If not, now we're ready, Mayor, for the department.
I'm going to declare a fifteen-minute reset. Come back roughly a quarter till, maybe ten till. Okay, we'll reconvene, reconvene after Seth and ask, who we got first, Adam?
Police Department, ask Chief Kendrick.
Chief.
And whoever else he might want to bring. I'm just going to man the view graph here.
Okay.
Come over here, Chief. It's more in the line of fire here.
Okay. I'm going to wear my vest.
As far as the overview you have there now, I think what I'll do for you to initially begin with is look at this fiscal year. I'll talk briefly about the variances that you see there, which you may have some questioning regarding those variances, and I'll go down through each one of them. You see the variance in increase as far as administration's part?
Excuse me, just a minute, Chief. If we, we could get some burners on about what page we're on and all of that, appreciate it.
This budget starts on page sixteen of your expenses.
Thank you.
Please, first, the question, and then, and then, please, take, we're talking there. Public sector, please.
Harvey, it goes department by department. This simply is an overview to try and make it simple.
And Councilman Ken, and I'll be going off of that overview, you know, rather than referring to a page, so I'll just give you the, the total as far as that particular department's concerned. I might preface all my comments by saying that, of course, this budget approved early on prior to July of, of this past, of ten. And in July of ten, we did a complete, I say a complete, a significant reorganization within the police department. We initiated two deputy chief's positions. And in initiating two de, deputy chief's positions, of course, as they moved up, there were some other positions that became those that, and we, where we need to take some level of progress, either lieutenants to captains, and so sergeants to lieutenants, and et cetera. So, you can see where that has some impact as far as salary increases are concerned. But, looking at admin, you see a variance there of a little over ten percent. When I look at that ten percent with the reorganization and the end step there, now, there were approximately four to five people that were moved, so that's the reason you see that variance. In patrol, point eight-nine percent, that's basically the end step, the increase you're seeing there. Criminal investigations, you see a reduction of four point two-five percent, or ninety thousand, a little over ninety thousand. That's because there was reduction in our step increases, and because we moved one position out of criminal investigations. Central records, you see a reduction there because there were two positions that were moved out to fill else, slots elsewhere within the department, and then, of course, the end step, or decrease. Aviation, you see a decrease there. The reason for the decrease in aviation is because last year, we did a major, I guess you might say overhaul as far as our aviation is concerned, so we didn't feel like we were going to see that need for that money again this year, because we should see less money as far as our aviation unit. So, what we did that facilitated in that reduction is we removed, we moved a certain amount of money from, from aviation to patrol for our uniforms, for officers, because we did not have enough money there to fly uniforms for officers adequately. And also, you guys are familiar with the NICSIL and the crime reports that are used quite fluidly in our community as far as crime is concerned, and making sure that our citizens are aware, and, you know, ultimately then getting the feedback from our citizens and their involvement. We moved a certain earmarked, a certain amount of money out, this fifteen thousand, to go to CID, Criminal Investigative Division, to pay for the NICSIL and pay for the crime reports. The gang unit, you see a reduction there of sixty thousand, that's because Chief Michaels was in the Metro Drug Unit at the time. He moved out of there to come up as our deputy chief over operations. Lieutenant Patrick Willis went in as a captain to that position. The law enforcement building, basically the increase you see there has to do with our operating cost. We have four maintenance people there now, where we only budgeted for three last year. You have the end step, and also, we're finding that with our HVAC and with our boiler system and some other things there, because they've been in that facility for so long, in fact, we're having to have parts specially made to even repair some of the repairs that are needed. We looked at cost of replacement, cost of replacement, where it's not even a warrant consideration because of the amount of cost there. So, what we're trying to do is, is just repair as, as we can to, to get by. Police annex, it's, of course, is basically almost reflective of a new line item in and of itself. That's inclusive of the four forty-seven East Main, which is the old Bell South Building. And I take responsibility for the next aspect of that, and that's the police annex or the old Chamber Building that was left out last year. Of course, we were still able to fund it, but it was left out, and like I say, I take responsibility for that being left out. So, that's inclusive of the police annex. Support services has to do with repair to our vehicles. The photo fingerprinting, the salaries, we felt like were, they're not as high as projected. And parking control also, salaries were not as high as projected, so you're seeing the reduction there of a couple of thousand dollars. Our drug control, you're seeing a ten point seven one percent increase. Some of that has to do with the end step, but also has to do with seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seventy, sir?
Seventy thousand dollars that was added to that because we've lost the meth lab cleanup money, the money that was earmarked by our federal government that helped us to clean up these meth labs because of the volatility of those meth labs, having to have specialty people to come in and do so. So, we had to add that money into drug control. Our tac unit, there's an increase there of a little over four percent. Of course, there again, that's a step. Also, we are looking at more ammunition for our tac unit, which better, they basically give oversight to the training and proficiency of our personnel with our agency. We're, we're only qualifying with our weapons just once a year. I personally do not feel that that's adequate. I'd say probably two tools that are very litigious for us is our vehicles we operate and the weapons that we carry. So, what we're working toward is at least, we're required by law to qualify at least once a year, but we'd love to do it on a quarterly basis just to ensure we have that level of, of proficiency with that weapon. School resource officers, you're seeing a thirty point, ten percent increase there. Of course, we lost the SRO grant, and we've also increased the, the SRO, we had three, we've increased that by one. This is being funded half by the city and half by the Board of Education. And with our grant being out, well, as you guys know, many times, a lot of grants were required to retain those positions for sometimes one and two years thereafter. The street crimes unit, you're seeing a, a, basically a move of that because it moved from street crimes back under, to, under patrol. The vehicle fleet, you're seeing a thirteen percent, a percent increase there. That's basically because of fuel costs that we've had to add, even extra monies in there as we look at this, uh, cost of fuel maybe approaching five dollars or, or even more. Crime prevention, there again, end step and some administrative changes, warrants and corrections. You're seeing a significant increase there, what I call significant. What we found as far as warrants and corrections within the past year is concerned, many times, these people that abscond from us go out of state. We have to extradite those people back here, and then the fact of extradition for an agency that might arrest someone that's being wanted by our agency, they will tell us that we have to be there within X number of hours, sometimes twenty-four, sometimes forty-eight hours, to get those people and bring them back. So, what incurs then is, of course, you have the expenses to go out of state, you also have overtime expenses that attaches to those personnel that are responsible for going and picking up those individuals. Our K-9 unit, you see an increase there. The reason for that increase is, we had a K-9 unit line item, but there were only two Canines at that time, under that particular line item. There were two other Canines that were in patrol, so our desire was to rather than have that unit split, put all the Canines in under one line item. Crime analysis, that's for end step, as far as that increase. Basically, with the police budget for this next fiscal year, you're looking at a little over sixty-six thousand dollars, or less than a half percent increase, and we can almost, you know, say that that's a result of the fuel cost and it's, and the ammo. In fact, as far as our present fiscal year is concerned, even though you see some, some inflations and so forth, when we look at the fiscal year, the budget as a whole, I understand at the end of April, we were four percent under budget, so we are meeting the expectations of council as far as the budget is concerned.
Chief, may I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Back to the vehicle fleet, did you say that this amount is your, is your total fuel cost, or fuel costs are included in that?
That's fuel, that's fuel costs included, that's fuel costs in there, sir.
Okay, it, it's a part of that, or that's a total?
Chief Ken, is that the total, Chief Ken?
Are you talking about, are you talking about the increase, Councilman Brooks? The increase is for eighty-five thousand, increase is for fuel only?
Okay, for fuel only. And does the total seventy, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, is that all fuel, or there's some other things built into that?
That's fuel and maintenance.
Fuel and maintenance, okay. Thanks.
Question. On the police annex building, we're talking about the Main Street building, the new one?
Yes, sir.
That doesn't include the utilities?
A certain portion of that is utilities. There will be some that will be paid out of the drug fund because it falls under the venue of two units there who actually do drug work, and so that can be, monies can be generated elsewhere, but then there's a certain portion of it that has to be paid out of just a general fund for Criminal Investigative Division.
So, the, the forty-two thousand dollars, forty-two six sixty, is mainly for utilities, but we're paying other parts of utilities out of different groups, is that correct?
That's for two buildings, the police annex in and of itself, which is the old Chamber, is right at twenty thousand.
Okay. We know that this one's going to be ten, maybe eight to ten thousand a month. Where are tho, where are those, where's that allocated? Where, where are we allocated there?
Well, as far as, you know, what you're saying, it should be a month, and what I understand, initially, when we came to council and talked to them about it, it could run less than a thousand dollars a month for the utilities down there, because we no longer have the connection fees and so forth that we had at American Drive.
Yeah, I'm talking about heat, water.
Right, right. That's what I believe Mr. Dawson told us when he ran a survey on the building prior to the consideration for purchasing. That's what, what they've been seeing as far as the cost allocation down there.
And, and half the utilities are split, they're...
That's what I'm, yeah, they're somewhere else, I've got a feeling.
They're coming out of the drug fund.
Okay, that's coming out of the drug, okay.
Couple of questions. Police overtime, I know in the past, that's, that's been one of my things I've been looking at, trying to get something to, to improve on. What are we doing to improve the, the overtime? And I noticed the budget for this year is about the same as the budget for last year, and if we are doing something to improve it, why is the budget not going down on that?
What we initially did is we went from the ten-hour shift back to the eight-hour shifts in order to put more people on the street. Now, the reason the budget's not going down this year is because with the fact of ten officers being short, of which we had those either in the academy or in the, or in the FTO program at the agency, they weren't actually on the street working, and then if you go back and look at even twenty-five, almost twenty-five thousand dollars for the seven days when the fugitives were here, so, you know, those, those little short bumps in the road, I guess you might say, for a period of time, they, they hit us pretty hard as far as overtime is concerned. But, what we're hoping is with the five eights being there, more people out there, we're hoping to see that this is really going. Now, we did that change, and it didn't take place until March, toward the end of March, really, I guess you might say, it didn't even really roll into effect for the first part of April, so we haven't really seen just how strongly that's going to impact us and help us far as overtime is concerned.
Okay, but we're still budgeting a huge amount of overtime for next year? You're saying that you're hoping we'll come way under budget?
I'm hoping we come way under budget.
Okay, okay. All right. The other, other thing I noticed, I guess in the police department budget, is that the, the admin is up a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and criminal investigation is down ninety, Greg unit, the gang unit is down. Are we allocating our money in the right spot to help really prevent crime by putting more in administration and less in the actual services?
Well, according to our numbers, we are. We're having an impact on crime, and that's one of the things I think we'll constantly see as far as the agency is concerned, when we look at the individual line items and we see that there might be a variance there as we come back before you guys on a yearly basis. What we're trying to do is stay very dynamic as far as crime ongoing in our community, and see what is, is exactly, is occurring. Of course, criminal investigation is always reactive. What we're trying now is a very proactive stance, where we feel like if we can go out with more manpower on the street, greater visibility, then we're going to have a proactiveness of maybe deterring crime, which would lessen the impact as far as the reactiveness of a criminal investigative division.
And those, those numbers too, that you're seeing, were strictly because of a shift in administrative personnel anyway, not the number of officers on the street.
That means you're going to have to work twice as hard now, because you moved up to admin.
I already am.
Repeat that, what you said about street, street crimes, or why it was dropped from the budget, or that was real?
Street crimes had its own individuality. There were street crimes, and there was a gang unit that was basically tied to the Metro Drug, and they worked in conjunction. What we did is because of this reactiveness that we're looking at as far as our comp stat is concerned on a weekly basis, as far as where's, crime is migratory within this community, this street crimes is meant to be, I guess you might say, just a quick reaction type unit, that where we're seeing crime begin to pop up, it has a magnitude that's really concerning to us, such as, say, residential burglaries, commercial burglaries, vehicle burglaries, these, this unit comprised of six people can just, I mean, they throw the full brunt of their resources at that directly issue at that time.
Okay, but we're budgeting zero for that, that's what's throwing me off.
They pull back under patrol.
Okay, so they're in patrol now, okay, okay. Last question, and this is specific on, uh, under the targeted community grant, we've got half a million or five hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted under professional services? What's, what's that for?
Lord, Councilman Wallace, and Councilman, essentially, the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the breakdown for the drug treatment piece of that grant. About four hundred and thirty-five thousand is set aside for one provider, one hundred and five thousand is set aside for other providers. So, they totaled about five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars together.
Okay, for, that's for the services?
Those are for the professional services, that's the category that that...
And Councilman, keep in mind, when they get a grant, if it's for a three-year period, you allocate the grant, the total amount, what's expended one year carries over to the next year. So, they may not spend five hundred and fifty thousand, it's over a three-year period.
Okay. And the auditors, let us get away with that?
That's the way they make us do it. Not my preference, that's those auditors.
One question, if I might. Councilman Wallace had, had, was, had hit a particular point that I was a little bit concerned about, and one of it was, we're talking about patrol only increasing a variance of seventy-three thousand dollars, but street crimes, we've dropped three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Where are we going, guys?
Where was?
I know we're trying to get, we're trying to get more people, that's my whole point, we're trying to get more people on the street.
The, because we, we've, we've lost some officers through attrition, the salaries are lower for starting officers. So, when the salaries are calculated for this year, there were a lot of new officers calculated. We, we just hired twelve, and we got to hire ten more. So, when those salaries are calculated, they're calculated based on what we're going to pay them for that year, so...
So, those ten are in here?
Yes.
Okay.
And street crimes, at the time, it was actually under the drugs, and so there were only three personnel in it. We've actually have six in there, and now three are already existing in patrol, so you only look at three coming back to patrol.
I was just looking at the numbers, it doesn't, didn't fit nearly as well as it should. Okay, thank you.
In support of the Chief and his staff concerning overtime pay, there is no human way you can predict that with all the different things that can happen, the natural disasters and things, and I'm, this is very moderate, of course, I'm in law enforcement also, and there's no way, you start out with OJI's and different things, there ain't any way that you can really project that, because there's all kinds of things that can happen. The only thing I can say is, from my viewpoint, is the fact we need the, the safety factor out there, and whatever it takes, we as the council support that.
I, I agree with what you're saying, but that's what I'm looking at, is that when we pay overtime, we... I agree with what you're saying, but that's what I'm looking at is that when we pay overtime, we pay time and a half, you know, so it's costing us half. So we'd be better off with more police officers, less overtime. And I think that's what they're they're shooting for with the.
That's something we have to have. We don't, he doesn't have any choice.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, Dave, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, are they going to talk about the capital?
Yeah, that's what the chief just said. Should we address capital?
Okay, probably best to do it as they're up here so they can be dismissed for the rest of the day. Okay, guys, go with the capital budget.
Probably looking, are you looking at this sheet here, Harvey, that identifies the project?
Yes, page two. I got a page right this time on the capital budget. How about that? All right.
And let me just say, this may seem a little bit redundant because we're talking about three vehicles here versus the thirty-two or however many was in the quote unquote long-term capital. But I think, Chief, what they want to look at is go down these line items here and, you know, justify our comment.
Can we go back up to patrol again? Is that higher? Okay, we're basically what I'm looking at is something that says, and this is what initially we submit to Ms. Bell, but it's a police administration which has the ballistic vest. That's replacement. Vests only have a life expectancy element that is guaranteed by the manufacturer and we have to replace those. Then we have the ballistic vests that we had to purchase for our new hires. You see a color printer, copier scanner, fax combo. This is for the professional standards. An integrity unit, they have a lot of confidential stuff when they're doing the background investigations that they need to come in exclusively to their office. The price is quoted here that was given to us by our our IT department with the city of Jackson concerning, you know, the items they were asking for. The color printer, fax, fax combo. In our IT department, that we have a police department, which is basically two individuals down there to give all the oversight to our mobile data terminals, our encar video systems, our radio systems, our radar, anything else that's been used as far as components and technologies within the agency. They're in an entirely different area from the rest of these people. We have access to a lot of the printers and so forth. They have asked for a a color printer in their in their office. You see the request for a flat screen TV. We're using these things quite extensively as far as training is concerned. One desire that we have as far as the city of Jackson Police Department is concerned is to have the most highly trained individuals that we can to be out here serving the citizens of our community. We're finding that we cannot not always have the money to go anywhere we want to. So what we're doing is we're working with the Law Enforcement Innovation Center out of Knoxville, many other agencies and so forth that offer avenues of training. When they come in, even though this training may have a cost factor to it by us hosting it, they're allowing us to have X number of positions that we can actually send our personnel to be there in the training. So we feel like this would be good as far as as, I guess you might say, raising that bar of expectation as far as the training of our agency. The riot helmets and the riot shields, at one time Homeland Security was providing money for us to purchase those. They no longer do so. The mobile laptops, the console replacements and so forth, those are the upgrades that we're needing, some items that are worn out. CID, the Sterlite story tubs and so forth, as the name itself pretty much implies, this is for stories. Excuse me, in our criminal investigative division, in order to put these things in the vault whenever we go out to a crime scene. The gang unit, the gang unit uses what's called a level three vest because of the volatility of so many of the things they're going into when you see gangs. Many times you see that companion marriage of drugs and violence and what they're going into. They ask for these particular level three vests to accomplish those goals and objectives. Support services, you see that we're requesting replacement of three vehicles. And in conjunction with those three vehicles, the items that will go along with those three vehicles to actually outfit those cars. The tac unit, these are items synonymous to the job that they do, which you see the the I'm gonna I'm gonna start with the the items under the taser because you probably have the most questions about it. Basically, the aim point, the insight flashlights, of course, the Glock twenty-two, we're looking at replacements for the agency there. And the Remington swings for our shotguns that are carried. That's being requested by our tactical unit. We're also asking for forty X twenty-six tasers with cameras to be deployed by our officers. You may have an extensive amount of questions concerning the deployment of tasers. And if you do, Lieutenant Mike Saller, who is the head of our tactical unit, gives oversight as far as our firearm proficiency and training, will also give oversight of this, has done a very extensive background investigation. If you'd like for him to come forward, he'd be more than glad to give you a presentation concerning these.
I think we want a direct presentation.
What's the wishes of the of the council? I suggest going ahead and and maybe making it through the rest of the the capital if we still got more left. And then if there are questions about the use of tasers and the information we have on it, then we can allocate some time to to that individual.
I believe that covers that.
You got your cap?
Except for what was asked for initially. Presently with the police department, we have fifty cars. This report is given to me by Deputy Chief Campbell December the thirty-first, December thirty-first of last year. We actually had fifty cars at the agency that had well in excess of a hundred thousand miles. We see some running close to two hundred thousand miles. I'm sure they're probably over that mark in that we were talking December thirty-first of ten, and now we're looking at June one, close to June one. I understand on one occasion that the city, this is prior to my coming here, that the city consecutively in two years bought a large quantity of vehicles totaling almost sixty. Those have plateaued. So that's the reason we're asking for those thirty-two vehicles in the in the capital consideration.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Now, you're suggesting that we, any questions on their capital outlay that we wait on? What are you saying?
Well, no, we let them finish their capital budget. And then if the council would like some more information on any item under capital, for example, the taser, then now I think would be the time to to go ahead and address those comments and and question the one who had done the research and go from there. Counsel, okay with that? You guys okay with that? Okay.
I think the only other item that we looked at on Al's initial was the radios, right, for the police and fire. You asked about the life expectancy of those radios.
Yes.
Normally, items of that nature is about ten years. After that, the vendor that supplies those items no longer feel like they are required to keep in stock those parts that are necessary to repair them with. We're not saying that we're totally antiquated yet, you know, but we understand we are running into issues as far as our two-way communication is concerned. It's a tremendous amount of money that impacts this agency greatly. But I think it's money well spent when we look at this and prepare for the future of of Jackson, Tennessee, and the citizens here and our service to them. Recently, Ms. Bell, myself, I believe Chief Michael was there, a representative from JEA was there, and a gentleman from the state of Tennessee that gives strong oversight to communications in this state, state by the name of John Johnson. Mr. Johnson was there because we sought that we wanted information from someone other than a vendor because, you know, a vendor is going to put a pitch on what they're trying to sell. For our two-way communication concern, there's a lot cheaper radios out there. But when we go back and look at nine-one-one, in the study of nine-one-one, the government came up and said, we had to have radios that were P twenty-five compliant. The biggest issues they have with nine-one-one is nobody could talk to one another. So therefore, we're no benefit to our citizens if we're not communicating. These radios cost extensively a little bit more money than a conventional radio. And that was some of our concern as far as what we asking money to, you know, to to spend to to purchase these radios. But in this meeting with Mr. Johnson, what he did apprise us of is with these P twenty-five compliant radios, they will be a priority system that will be the first system that will come up should something catastrophically happen to our communication system in the state of Tennessee due to a natural disaster or some other thing of that of that extent. So based on the fact that they will be the first system that the state of Tennessee communication will stand up, we felt like we wanted to be the first one to stand up to the needs of our community. That's why we're suggesting that we here in Mark spend this kind of money to buy this equipment to make sure we can meet the needs of our citizens and provide them with the service and the support that they expect us to.
Okay, counsel, okay then with the with the cap at this point. Barry, do you have Siler here?
He's here.
Okay, thank you, Gav. Y'all can.
Question.
Yes, go ahead.
With respect to patrolmen now, how many do we have? Patrolmen?
Patrolmen, one hundred and twenty patrolmen. We have two hundred and twenty with two hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty, I'm thinking patrol, two hundred and twenty personnel at the agency.
Okay, and patrolmen?
Then we have the vehicles too. You're talking about a radio, sir?
No.
I'm sorry.
Patrolmen.
Patrolmen, a hundred and seventeen.
There's there's right at a hundred and thirty now assigned to the patrol.
A hundred and thirty and with the annexation and your future plans, how many?
That that does include the annexation.
It does, okay.
We 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 had we had already budgeted for the officers in the annexation, so.
Okay.
But we're we are officers down and we're expecting a couple of more retirements.
I noticed in your in your capital outlay, request mobile camera system for patrol cars. For several years, I have been a strong advocate of cameras in every patrol car. This is probably six or seven years. Is is that coming to fruition or is that going to happen? Or how 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 far are we, fifty percent or what?
Those are replacements. We we virtually have, we, Chief Campbell might can answer that better, but we don't have very many patrol cars at all that don't have cameras.
Maybe the mark patrol units that he's referring to, which are assigned exclusively to patrol, the only issue we've run into is essentially matching those with the computer systems. They have to be replaced periodically, but for the most part, most of the patrol cars have them. There are a few that do not have them. And essentially, we have to request additional funds to be able to put those in all those, the units remaining there, not that many remain.
Okay, this item one thirty-two, mobile camera system for patrol cars, six of them, that's what we talking about?
Those are replacements.
Those are replacements.
Those are replacements.
So I I'm still not getting the number of patrol cars without cameras in them.
I can get you that.
Is it is it large?
No, it's not that big. It's probably maybe ten to fifteen. It might not.
Counsel, if you can, from myself, sir, I I totally embrace what you're saying. I want to see encar video systems being used exclusively among those officers out there.
We we're. I can.
Go ahead.
A patrol lieutenant, a patrol sergeant may not necessarily have the minimum because the idea was to get them on the street in patrol cars answering calls for service. Lieutenants and sergeants may not necessarily answer calls for service. So the priority was getting them into patrol cars that respond to calls for service first. Since that time, we've run into some additional costs to put those systems in because of the end of life for a lot of the computer systems, the upgrades and things that the digital camera systems do not match. So we've we've been doing that over the last couple of years.
Chief, I'm glad to hear you say that. I I really support what you're you're saying. It would be it would run a checks and balance system for all of us, particularly the police department. Now, with Mr. Chairman, with respect to the the tasers, are we going to hear a report first for any questions or?
Plan to.
Any more questions?
Yeah, one more.
How many police cars approximately do we have?
We have a hundred and seventy-seven police vehicles, ninety-seven under assigned patrol. According to the report Chief Campbell provided, we have decent.
And the average lifespan is three years?
That's even hard to say because some of them are running two shields.
The the average lifespan can be anywhere from four to seven years. We've got two that would qualify for antique plates that are not in patrol but are in administration that are driven by CID personnel. Traditionally, the average mileage per year runs anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-seven thousand miles. There are a few that may get as much as thirty-two to thirty-five, depending on maintenance schedules, what's down. So that's why we have suddenly the high number of cars that have topped unbelievable records for us as far as the amount of mileage that they have on them.
So the the thirty-sixth that we're replacing or asking for new ones this year, that's about a fourth of the fleet or a fifth?
Thirty-two would be about a a fourth, yes, about a fourth of the fleet. They're all designed to go to, twenty-three of them are designed to go to patrol division. Nine are designed to go to administrative replacements.
Or the reason I ask it, I'm wondering if we if we, you know, should be putting this in our capital budget every year instead of borrowing money for it? You know, because it looks like this is about the number we need to replace every year, is about thirty thirty-five, so.
Formerly, we did that, but we've run into essentially the same problem that the whole city and everybody else is running to, a money issue. So we've gone to replace anywhere from eight to twelve every year for maybe the last four or five years.
Thank you.
One last question, and this corresponds to personnel, and I wanted to get it clear. When we talk about a hundred and thirty officers, I think it was the number, and two hundred and twenty personnel, can you give me an idea of of the two hundred and twenty personnel, how many are actually on the ground each and every day?
That's why I was thinking it probably, well, when you say on the ground, I guess you're talking patrol.
Patrol, yeah.
Or then you've got criminal investigation, of course, they're out there.
On the street. They're on the street, though. They're on the street. Criminal investigation is on the street.
Investigation on the street, so.
Narcotics, criminal investigations division has about twenty-eight people. The narcotics unit has twelve. The gang unit has nine.
Then we've got a hundred and thirty.
Probably less than ten of us that really serve in administrative capacity. Everybody else is on the.
So of the two, twenty, ten are administration?
Corrections and corrections, whatever.
Okay. Any other questions from counsel as far as the chiefs? Guys, if y'all will make a chair available to Lieutenant Siler and let him come up and address the issue of tasers, please. Thank you.
When before we dismiss them, we want to do the drug funds also.
Okay, yeah, that'll be that'll be fine. We'll come back to come back to it. Morning, Lieutenant.
Morning, sir.
If you if you would just share briefly as far as your research on the on the tasers and one one of the reasons why they've ended up in the in the capital budget for the city?
Yes, for Mayor Gias, member of the councils. First of all, let me start out by telling you what it is not, contrary to myth. I did a lot of research on the tasers. I'm also one of those that I like to consider myself more involved before I give a presentation. So quite literally, I asked the chief if I could actually go through the user training and get hit with this device so that I could actually have a firsthand view myself of what it does. A lot of myths are out there. First of all, the taser system is not a torture device. Basically, what the taser system is, it's considered a less lethal device. And it's basically electronic control device that basically utilizes current to block the sensory and motor nerves of the body. Basically, to put that in layman's term, what it does is it blocks what the brain is telling the rest of the body to do. When you look at the device, of course, there are numerous agencies that are currently utilizing this device with great success. And as a result of the training, I found several things that I found very interesting. First of all, the taser device across the country, and of course, there's, it's like every other less lethal device such as, and what I mean less lethal device is I'm mainly talking about chemical agents, impact weapons such as batons, and also hands-on countermeasures, officers having to actually subdue someone physically with their hands. The taser device falls right in that category, and it's been ruled in numerous cases across country. The courts do not consider it excessive force as long as the device is utilized properly. And of course, as I had mentioned to the chief earlier, the Jackson Police Department has always had a a history of maintaining sound policies on everything we utilize, whether it be less lethal, whether it be firearms, whatever. And of course, the taser, again, would fall in that category as far as the training, the policy. We've always had sound policy and enforcement of the policies. But what we found was, what I found during this research was that. But what we found was, what I found during this, uh, uh, research was that, uh, it's mainly recognized right now as one of the most effective, uh, less lethal tools out on the market right now. Uh, it, I actually seen that across the board, uh, depart agencies utilizing tasers uh, seen on average an eighty percent decrease in injuries to officers and injuries to suspects, uh, as, by using the taser device. Uh, what the taser device allows you to do, it allows you to, of course, it's a device that shoots out, uh, probes, uh, that are connected to wires that actually make contact either with the clothing or the skin. And it, uh, sends a charge to the individual, which as I said before, what it does is just enough to block what the brain is telling the rest of the body to do. It affects the sensory and motor nerves of the body, uh, which allows police to basically affect the arrest or subdue the individual without having to have a, basically a knockdown dragout, uh, is basically what it was, what it ends up, uh, being. You know, a lot of times if you don't have some type of, uh, equipment like that. Uh, but in light of being able to do that, uh, reductions in injuries to officers down eighty percent, uh, reductions to suspects' injuries eighty percent, uh, de- decrease. Uh, suspects, I mean, uh, uh, reductions in officer complaints, uh, legal litigations involving the use of excessive force down dramatically. Uh, and another interesting thing that I seen when I was doing the research, I was able to pull a small snippet of medical, uh, payments that the city has made, uh, just in a small period of time on officers, uh, mainly dealing with affecting arrest, uh, and being involved in scuffles. And just in that small snippet alone, uh, I calculated right at ninety thousand dollars, uh, just in that small snippet that the city had to pay out for medical expenses. Now, that did not include workman's comp, uh, that dotted, that didn't include overtime, that we had to hire overtime to fill those officer slots. Uh, and as I said, I'm, research across the board, all agencies that are utilizing this device have seen an eighty percent decrease in officer injuries and suspect injuries. Uh, I know the news, there's a lot of myths out there, uh, it, that, uh, revolve around the taser. Uh, there's been reports that tasers have caused death. Uh, what my research found was that none of the deaths that have occurred utilizing the taser was attributed actually to the taser device itself. It was attributed to either A, a bad deployment of the taser, or B, uh, a pre-existing medical, in, a pre-existing medical condition or, uh, unexpected sudden death awareness syndrome, uh, was basically what they were all tied into. Uh, but they have been extremely, extremely effective in their uses and, uh, it would fall in our force continuum uh, in the same location as chemical weapons would, uh, basically. If the officer has the, uh, has the, uh, is at that stage to where chemical weapons can be utilized, a taser can be utilized also, uh, and it's an extremely effective device.
There's a report that I looked at by the National Institute of Justice, which is called the Interreport Study of Death Following Electromuscular Disruption. Although exposure to a C E D, which is a conducted injury device, is not risk-free, there is no conclusive medical evidence within the state of current research that indicates a high risk of serious injury or death from the direct effects of C E D exposure. In fact, it said in this report that the risk of death is less than point two-five percent. And as far, I mean, I guess although as if we've done any handyman around the house, we've been shot by one-ten. It says as far as the average of what output you might see from the taser, it's less than a Christmas tree bug. And plus, it will not affect, uh, anyone that has a pacemaker or a cardiac defibrillator. Another thing that I think is quite concerning to me, ladies and gentlemen, uh, is the fact that there are nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety-eight names on the law enforcement memorial in Washington, D.C. Three hundred and sixteen we just added there a few weeks back when we, as a community, looked at the law enforcement officer memorial. There's fifty-eight thousand of us that are assaulted every year, sixteen thousand of us sustaining some type of injury. We're seeing a lot more violence out there that is exercised toward our officers. In fact, as of the end of March this year, if it continues as it's going right now, we'll go back to some of the deadliest times as far as law enforcement's concerned, which was back in the seventies when we see as many as two hundred people, two hundred law enforcement officers being killed on a yearly basis. Right now, there's already seventy-seven fatalities total of deaths in our country. Of the twenty-eight states, Tennessee is number six in the top ten. So, you know, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm saddened with the fact that we had to come before you guys and ask for a tool of this nature in order to do our job. When nine eleven happened, we went with a surgical precision to go do what we had to to affect whatever needed to be done to take care of a person that had resulted in three to four thousand deaths in the twin towers. And that was an enemy from abroad. We're talking about what we're having to deal with as far as our own citizens concerned and that level of violence and so forth is exercised toward our officers. So, we're asking for a tool to better protect our officers out there and ultimately protect our citizens too.
Chief, how many are going by and how many hours of training were those officers received in preparation to use them?
I think the number we were gonna purchase was, was it forty, chief? Uh, the number of hours training each person that is certified with tasers is considered an in-user. And that is usually a, a two-day, uh, training event, uh, which encompasses everything that that individual would need to know, uh, as far as the taser device is concerned. Uh, and they also get the luxury of feeling the taser themselves, which is not enjoyable at all.
I, like Lieutenant Siler, have been tased myself, but I, I mean, basically all it did, once I was tased, I just locked up as far as my muscles were concerned. And as soon as that cycle was over, that's how I put the whole situation over, I was back up on my feet and ready to go. So, I'm like Lieutenant Siler, I have experienced the fact of, of that taser and know what it does to, to incapacitate you just for, for a moment's time there. And Counsel, Buchanan, uh, based on something that you suggested a while ago, or you have a strong passion for, these tasers will also be equipped with audio/video that will capture, actually watch being done as far as the deployment which led up to that officer having to use that particular, uh, tool.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Lieutenant, you said something about the cause and effect with respect to the taser itself does not inflict injury, but you, you gave three, three synonymous items that inflict the injury, uh, medical, go over that again.
Okay, first of all, I, I did not, I, I didn't, if, if, uh, if I led, if I misled you to the, the fact that it does not cause injury.
Mm-hmm.
All injuries that are, occurred with the taser are secondary injuries such as, uh...
You mentioned three, yeah.
Well, well, the ones I was talking about, you talking about the ones that led to death, is that, that have been attributed? Uh, basically, number one was a bad deployment, all right? Now, what I mean by a bad deployment is, is during the training, uh, you know, you're taught, of course, not if someone is in an elevated position, you're taught not to tase the individual because when you tase him, then you run the risk of a fall being the cause of death. Or if someone's in a swimming pool, uh, you don't tase them, not for the fact that they're gonna get electrocuted because you do not get electrocuted with the taser because all of the energy is contained within the device. The danger with being in water like that is drowning, of course. Uh, and that's what I would deem as far as a bla- a bad deployment. And of course, that comes back down to sound policy and the enforcement of that policy, which we, we've had a, always had a history of doing. Uh, the second one, uh, pre-existing medical conditions, um, and more or less, that falls on the lines a lot of times of, uh, which kinda, kinda coincides with the third, which is the sudden unexpected death awareness syndrome. Uh, which basically, I, 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 you may be familiar with the term cocaine psychosis, uh, which we've had a couple of those incidents that actually happen in, in Jackson itself. Uh, I read a lot of medical stuff already, and basically what I gathered out of it as far as when the sudden unexpected death awareness syndrome happens, is not a whole lot that could have been done anyway. I mean, if, if medical help was not right there that instant. Uh, but those are the three things that are attributed, that deaths have been attributed to with the taser, not the actual use of the device itself.
But there are things that we are given as far as this training is concerned regarding the sudden unexpected death. In other words, if the person is exhibiting bizarre violent behavior, if they're disrobing or if they're attacking glass, they have superhuman strength or they're doing self-mutilation, other things of that nature, you know that there's something of a greater issue there that a taser's not gonna, going to facilitate, which oftentimes, you know, that, that, that requires medical attention.
That, that's the reason the training is so important. Now, let, let me, let me make a statement, I'm gonna quit. I, I have reservations, uh, with respect to the use of the, the tasers. We want to protect our officers and we want to make sure that we are crime fighting. Uh, I also, the last two or three years, have been doing research with respect to taser incidents. Uh, in the mo- in one in Maryland, Tennessee, I followed that one very closely in the, the judgments, uh, in the court system uh, with the taser use, I, I've looked at them. Uh, I, I have reservations, we want to protect our officers, but I, I, I'm, I'm not fully convinced that we need them. I'm just not fully there. And that's my statement.
Well, can, can, one thing I would like to add to that i- if I could, uh, of course, one of the driving things that a lot of agencies are, that are doing this now is because the taser device itself is not a panacea, it's not gonna cure all. In other word, there's not a less lethal device on the market that's gonna be the exact, perfect, uh, tool for everything, it's not. But what we have found out is, of course, with the, with the popularity of M M A, uh, and, and the more frequency of officers having to lay, actually lay their hands, uh, on individuals during, to affect the arrest, uh, injuries have skyrocketed, officers being assaulted have skyrocketed. Uh, the taser device simply allows us to do that in a manner that eliminates, that the, it eliminates as the, the amount of time that that officer has to actually get into a physical confrontation with this individual. Uh, and, uh, and it has been shown to be extremely de- effective in that area, so...
Okay, any other, any other questions from counsel to?
The forty, uh, units we're getting, how do we make a determination on which officers, uh, get the, get the units?
Basically, all the, uh, uniform patrol officers will be attending the school, they will be certified in that, uh, in the use of the taser and they will...
I guess are the ones on the front line that are most likely gonna...
Uh, those, those are the ones initially that we're, that we're concerned with. Uh, Mr. Wallace, we're concerned with the, the, the first-line responders, uh, which are uniform patrol officers. Uh, and of course, we will have some to also issue out to additional personnel if, uh, if, if the need arises. Uh, but, uh, they will be issued out, uh, from a, you know, just like they issue stuff out at roll call, they will be issued out to the officers and fully accounted for, turned back in at the end of shift and, uh, but that, that was our main, our number one priority was to get it into first-line responders, hence.
The training that we're doing, we're gonna do the training in-house?
Yes, sir, yes, we will. We'll have, uh, we'll actually have department, uh, certified instructors, uh, that will be able to do all the training in-house.
Just one quick question. Um, during the last two years, how many times has an officer deployed a taser?
We don't...
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the last two years?
Talking about our officers?
Yes.
Uh, our, our, the Jack's Police Department?
Yes.
We don't have...
We, we don't have tasers.
We don't press and have.
We don't press and have.
So, we don't have any at all?
No, sir.
So, we have no experience other than, than yours?
As far as having the devices, no, sir. I mean, we don't have the devices, but I mean, that's gonna require the train. I have been through the user training.
Yeah.
Uh, and am going to the instructor certifi- certification. Uh, but it's like any other piece of equipment, as far as batons, I mean, uh, that's, equipment comes out that you may or may not have at the time, but you get, you obtain the equipment and you do the training, provide the training for it.
Okay, any other questions from counsel as to this issue? Uh, if not, Lieutenant Siler, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the information and, Al, we need to get into the drug fund.
Drug funds, I think while, uh, the chief...
Okay, good, Al.
So, on the bottom of page nine, because this is a separate fund, it's not detailed, but, uh, I think, uh, Barry and the chief can address the staffing and, uh, on these two funds.
You look at the, uh, police department, ninety-five thousand, you see the variance there, revenues, uh, still consistent, but you're seeing the expenses drop, that's because of the American Drive location that we no longer have, that we won't be paying for those expenses out there. And then the one forty... The metro, uh, you're seeing variances there of a hundred and twenty-seven under thousand on the revenues, you're seeing a variance of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand on the expenses. Now, the reason for these variances, there's money that actually comes in to the metro group, you know, it's self-funding. Uh, some of this money that comes in is from A T F, is from D E A, and it's from the marshal service. Uh, you know, that money cannot be used for budgeted purposes, it's a non-budgeted money, but it also has X number of years that it must be spent. So, in that, we had that money available to us, that money to, uh, to purchase vehicles, uh, which is what you're seeing as far as the expenses, uh, that was used of the hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And of course, with that hundred and twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand being gone, uh, that revenue, uh, you're seeing, you're seeing the negative there as far as the revenues concerned.
Okay, guys, any, any questions, chief?
I got a question, I'm going to reverse a little bit. Under the extra duty employment and the barlot extra duty and the hospital officers, is that where we, we, the police officers are working for another company and the police department being reimbursed for that? Okay, are we being reimbursed to pull them out?
For the hospital, for the hospital, you're gonna see a two-year employee there and you're not gonna see a full amount for what we have there. We didn't feel like it was appropriate to send a two-year officer out to a hospital and even to a, uh, to a school resource officer environment because we don't feel that, that officer is adequately prepared to get out there and deal with that environment and those situations that they're confronted with. But basically, we see an hour, hour we laid on the barlot, but as far as the hospital's concerned, reimbursement on a two-year employee, but that contract I noticed was a number of years back. It's my intention, we just renewed, I think in March of this year. It's my intention to go to hospital and see if we could readdress that as far as compensation.
So, we're, we're, for, for all those situations, we're trying to be fully compensated for the expense of the police department then.
As much as, as we possibly can.
Particularly on the barlot and the, and the other...
They are fully compensated.
They are fully compensated in the barlot.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions from counsel? Is that in the?
Ends the police portion, yes.
Okay, all right, okay, thanks, guys. Counsel, we have a quarter till twelve, we have fire department up next. You all want to? Okay, we're going into recess for lunch. Uh, we'll reconvene at one-thirty with the next group of, um, people to address the council. Thank you.
Reconvene to counsel, I think the fire department is up next.
Here we go, okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. Our budget is on the projector, the hope of your budget. And, um, in order to give a clear explanation as to, uh, our direction for the next budget year, let me first, uh, preface by saying that in the last three and a half years that I have been the chief of the fire department, we have tried to be, uh, more proactive in our, uh, operations. We've looked at things, uh, that would help us reduce, uh, the number of fire deaths, uh, help us to reduce the number of fire calls and also prepare ourselves for, uh, those major, uh, emergencies that we, um, had not been addressing in the past. Uh, over the last three years, we have, um, created a different platform and a proactive direction for the fire department, uh, which included, uh, after the two thousand and eight tornado, we implemented an urban search and rescue program, which was partially funded by the Homeland Security Grant that was part of, uh, our program. Last year, we received fifty-three thousand dollars, uh, from Homeland Security in order to be able to initiate that program. And we're in the process of finalizing that, uh, this year. Along with that, we were instrumental, if you'll look at the, uh, fire grant program, we received four hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars from, uh, uh, a... we received four hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars from FEMA, which was a FEMA grant, and it allowed us to put exhaust systems in the fire stations. It also allowed us to buy thermal imaging cameras, which would give our guys a better opportunity to go into burning buildings and be able to search those buildings with more clarity and more visibility. Along with that, if you look at our, our individual line items, there is a variance in our administration of eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and six cents, which is a twenty-five percent increase. We are mandated by OSHA to do wellness and physicals for all of our operations personnel every other year. And this is the year that we have to go back along with our hazmat technicians and give everybody on the fire department wellness physicals. And that will constitute the difference from our last year, the eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars will allow us to give physicals to roughly a hundred and sixty-five fire department personnel.
That is shown for your information on the handout that the chief gave you. We just put it up there individually. Randy, you had one earlier, but he's explaining this line item here, I believe. Go ahead, chief.
Okay. In our fire department operations, we have done a partial reorganization in our fire department, which was part administration and part operations. Two years ago, we implemented a lieutenant's promotion, which is a difference between our engineers or our drivers and our captains. We, in the past, had thirty-six captains operating out of six firehouses. And over the last two years, we've been able to reduce the number of captains that we have on the department by eighteen, which is a pretty significant savings financially. It allows us to put lieutenants in operation, which are frontline, a first-line supervisor position. And those positions are limited to the, to the fact that as supervisors, they're only supervising one piece of equipment and four personnel versus what our captains were doing, especially at our multi-company stations where we had three pieces of equipment and sometimes twelve to thirteen people that were being supervised. So by, by injecting the lieutenant promotion process, we narrowed the, the scope of supervision and reduced the overall cost of our supervisors. So that, along with the fact that we have a cap of a hundred and sixty-five total fire department personnel, fourteen in administration and a hundred and fifty-one in operations, gives us a reduction of two point seven nine percent in our operations. The fire prevention, in our restructure, we made another position that was administrative services. And the administrative services position was actually giving control over both, both fire prevention and training to one supervisor. We, we at one time had two supervisors, one directing training and one directing fire prevention. And by reducing and putting, putting both of those divisions under one umbrella, we were able to reorganize and we created at the bottom down there the safety and risk management position. And that, that position was taken out of our training division. And we also had a vacancy in fire prevention because the, the chief of fire prevention then became the director over both training and fire prevention. So that gave us somewhat of a saving in, in those operating costs, salaries and benefits. In our training, I mentioned earlier that we were finalizing our urban search and rescue program. And in order to be able to do that, we needed to increase monies to finalize two areas of training. And if you'll notice, the cost, the forty-three thousand, four hundred and the twenty-one thousand, seven hundred are the final payments to our technical team that comes in out of Memphis to administer that training. The fifteen thousand that goes along with that is for building props and for the other operational costs that goes along with that, books for the classrooms and, and any incidentals that go along with that. We also have two contract positions that meet our ISO requirements, one being our officer class and the other being our pump class. And those two classes are mandated each year that we do special lines training for our drivers as well as for our officers so that they will meet all of their ISO requirements. And other than that, there was just a slight increase in our communications, our, our building, public education, and our safety and risk management programs. And those were basically administrative costs in those, in those line items. So if any of you have questions, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions, chief?
Yes. Good morning. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you.
I've got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of overtime expenses for last year to date. That's, of course, only eight months out of the year. You're anticipating, this is in the fire department operation, you're anticipating budgeting sixty thousand dollars additionally this year. You'd budgeted sixty thousand dollars last year. What's, what's happening?
Well, what's happening in our overtime is simply that October, November and December, we have an increased number of people taken off for various reasons, which reduces our staffing to the point that we have to incur overtime to, to meet our minimum level of staffing. Along with that, in order to meet the, the training requirements for our USAR program, which I mentioned earlier, we were gonna try to complete that this year. When those guys go through eight hours of intense physical training, they are not physically fit to return to duty in their own shift to be able to do sixteen hours of emergency response. So basically, doing their training, which is, we're looking at three additional weeks of training for approximately thirty-eight individuals. During that, that training period, we have, we have to backfill the position that they're in in order for them to be able to go through the physical training and then after eight hours to have sixteen hours of rest, go home. And this, this training is normally done five days a week. So from Monday through Friday, they're, they're doing intense training. And we felt like for safety reasons and for their physical health, it would be justified for us to pay the additional costs in order for them to be able to finish this training.
Couple of questions. In fire prevention, your employee benefits dropped twenty-seven thousand dollars, but your salaries actually went up a little bit and the benefits are only thirty-four percent of the total salaries. Have we underestimated our benefits there, possibly?
We didn't underestimate the benefits. That position was a transitional position that was, that was filled. We had a young man that was OJI initially, that we moved from operations into, well, actually, administration. And he was able to complete his, his program as an administrator. The position itself currently is not filled. It has not been filled for the last six months. And even though we anticipate bringing a person in to fill that position, they're gonna come in at a much lower rate than with that position.
Okay, my, my question's on the benefits, though. We're showing the benefits to, the budget for benefits to be reduced twenty-seven thousand dollars, but the salaries actually go up a couple of thousand dollars. And then the, the benefits is only thirty-four percent of the total salary, so.
Benefits were calculated at field positions at the time of the budget. Based upon the mayor's, that there would be no increase in positions. It was based on the positions that currently were filled in that department.
Okay.
That would be what he had. And salaries, not based on his budgetary figures, it would be based on what current salaries were at the time.
Okay, but if we're gonna have the same amount of salaries or more salaries there, should benefits have gone down?
It's not much to that, but it's based on what positions were that were filled at the time we calculated the benefits.
You may want to look at that one again and make sure then. I'm not, that would just look odd to me, is the benefits going down that much and being that lower of a percentage of the total salaries then. The other thing, on the, the OSHA, the OSHA required physicals you were talking about?
Right.
Is that only for the administrative personnel?
That's for all individuals on the Jackson Fire Department that are certified firefighters.
Okay, now, is that gonna be ongoing or is that just a once in a?
It's gonna be every other year.
Okay. Why is that not allocated to the departments where the employees are, are working then? I guess that's what's throwing me off a little bit, as opposed to putting it in administration.
Well, by putting it in administration, we're able to not only catch those individuals that we're anticipating hiring in July, but also those current employees. And that will be a fluctuation because we do have individuals that will be retiring during this budget cycle. So it's gonna be a fluctuation there. All of the money is allocated for that, may not be used because of that reason.
And the other question, I guess, is in the central dispatch services. It looks like you've got three new people in that department.
She's coming up next.
Okay. Oh, that's not him?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Let me ask Al a question, because I, I know this is, it's gonna be repetitive in a way. I'm taking a look at the budget and the actual year-to-date. And again, we're talking about from the, this is for salaries in department four-two-two-two-oh. We're looking at what we have paid somewhere around, actual year-to-date, five million. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right.
Yes. That's under operations, yes.
If I calculate that out to, for four more months, that's a little over seven and a half million. Would that be incorrect?
I think the budget for that was somewhere in the neighborhood of eight million. We have been very diligent in trying to, to hold that cost down. We actually were four positions short the first of the year, and we chose not to fill those positions. So we were able to, to.
To drop your budget.
Yeah, drop, you know, drop the amount of money that we, we spent in that, in that operating line item.
Councilman, you did, but there's only two more months. This is through April thirtieth. When Al said the four months, that's on revenue because of the sales tax.
Okay, so this time we got two.
Two months of salaries and there'll be ten days that'll be accrued back from fiscal year eleven.
Thank you.
One other question. On the, the training, we're doing more training in-house here in town now, are, are we not?
We are.
Okay.
Now, there, there are times, like last year, when we had a considerable, a large, larger number of people that we hired. We actually hired fifteen in last budget year. And at the time, we only had three instructors. And not only were they doing recruit training, but they were doing in-service training for our fire department. So we elected to send those fifteen people to the state training academy in Bellbuckle. We incurred quite a larger expense in our training budget because of that. And so this year, we're anticipating a smaller number will be able to do that in-house, which is gonna be a reduction in the amount of money that we'll have to spend for outside training.
Okay, we've gone up on our budget in training. That's what's throwing me off a little bit.
The, the increase wasn't for the recruit training, it was for the additional training in our urban search and rescue program.
Okay, okay.
I have a question, if I may. Good afternoon, chief.
Thank you.
I, I noticed that you have motor vehicle fuel and oil broken down by departments within the fire department. Do you have a total figure?
We don't, and it's very hard to anticipate what our expenditures are gonna be in, in that fuel line item because you, you understand now that fuel is continually rising and then it will drop. So what we're trying to do overall is allocate so much money for each division. And when we see that that division is, is going over budget, if there are ways that we can reduce that?
Would you make those adjustments across department, across divisions?
Right.
Okay. And I'm assuming the largest budgeted amount is for seventy-five thousand. That's on page.
That's our operation. That's fuel for our fire trucks and battalion chiefs vehicles. And that number you will probably see continue to increase because we, we added two additional pieces of equipment along with that.
And at a, at a later date, could you just give me a percentage of the total? I'm interested in the fuel costs.
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
One more question. I, I just noticed this, and it's something I, I know you've had it for years and I'm just not familiar with it. It's called halftime premium. Can you explain that to me?
The halftime premium, if I'm not mistaken, is, is, we don't control that. That's, that's overtime expenses for those, those operations. We, we did have it in, 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 in training, fire prevention, as well as our operating costs. I'm not, I'm not real sure.
This is something that was a lawsuit in nineteen-eighties brought into the Department of Labor where the officers, firemen that worked twenty-four-hour shifts are entitled to this halftime premium in the city of Jackson back in the nineteen-eighties. This lawsuit was found guilty of not paying it. So it's something that we're mandated to pay to firm who work in a twenty-four-hour position.
That was previously? Or is that now?
That's now.
We still pay that now?
Yeah, we still pay that.
It, it stops them from having the same amount of money every week for a check. In other words, they have a short check one week and next week they have a big check because of this lawsuit.
Okay. Thank you.
And we allocate that out separately because?
So that we can know exactly what the amount is that we're having to pay for that. And it is only for the firefighters on the twenty-four-hour shift. All others are not entitled to it. It has to be within that twenty-four-hour shift.
Do we report that to anyone? Do we have to, by law?
We most certainly do.
It'd be a good reason to keep it separate. And that's why it would be separate.
Before the chief steps down, chief Dillon, also, we probably need to address, not probably, we do need to address the capital, which is on page three of the capital section towards the back of the folder. And fire is right up at the top there. We can let chief Pearson, if you wanna go through it item by item or summarize, but that's the amounts. And I know this is confusing. This is more the repetitive, ongoing capital. And then on the other sheet that I presented this morning in the funding, we'll let the mayor, we'll let, we'll let chief Pearson address the fire engine and the fire station as a separate item.
In our recurring capital budget, the thermal imagers are items that I mentioned earlier that firefighters use when they go into a burning structure. And currently, we have eight of those in operation. And by having those, when those companies go into a fire, they're able to visualize because of the, the technology. It eliminates the smoke, it identifies hot areas. They're able to operate safer in, in those. These, the thermal imagers, we try to replace at least two a year in order to be able to have not only an extra when, when, when one wears out and needs to go into service, but the life expectancy of this equipment is, is only like four years or five years. And so we try to replace about two of them a year in order to stay abreast of that. The same with the, the turnout gear. For a hundred and fifty-three fireline personnel, NFPA says the life expectancy of the turnout gear is roughly ten, ten years. And so each year, we try to replace an average of fifteen sets of turnout gear. Our hoses wear out and we, we try to budget enough to replace at least. And in carrying hoses on our trucks, we, we try to carry roughly a thousand feet of our supply line on each apparatus. And we try to replace a, a small portion of that every year. The engine and pump replacement costs due to the, the ages of our equipment. On an average, now, we're having to replace an engine or pump off of one of our apparatuses practically every year. So we budget it for that. We have not replaced our upgraded battalion chief command vehicles in the last ten years.
Last six years at least.
And they are running in excess of 100,000 miles. And so we felt like it was time to upgrade those two pieces of equipment. That's where the 60,000, 654 came in. We lost part of our public education equipment, the sparking, costume, head and helmet. We lost that during the flood. It was not covered under our disaster recovery. And so we had to budget for that in order to be able to replace that and go out to the schools and do that type of a public fire education program.
Al, would you mind just briefly giving the council a little background on total amount of capital that we're using, not only what the chief went over there, but all the departments, some of the smaller items, how much that was or how much we budgeted totally?
Well, we're having to take out of the so-called recurring or small items, we're having to take about $900,000 out of the general fund, fund balance versus the so-called long-term or special funding items which are coming out of borrowed funds.
Could you, could you tell the council how much, what the total amount of that capital is that we're funding all the departments and the smaller, and the smaller equipment needs? Was it 1.5 or 1.6?
I think I can-
Most of that coming out of, some of it coming out of fund balance.
Karen, you might help me out with this on the capital sheets that you prepared. Here, what I think the mayor is asking, how much, if you take out the grants, how much is this raw recurring capital here? Where last year was 3.6.
It was 1.5 if we gave it all to the department.
It started out 1.5 million.
Right, right.
I don't know if it changed plus or minus 25.
So roughly one and a half then went to capital, and roughly 800,000 that came out of fund balance to get us to that 1.5.
I'm sorry, that's, yeah, it's one and a half roughly.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions of the fire department budget? Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Then, I think Randy had already jumped ahead of us here, but now we wanna look at the quote-unquote "other" public safety areas, and mainly, central dispatch is a large item budget-wise and as far as the increase also. So, Lenanda, let me give you some good news before we go further here. We did come up with, luckily, $44,000 was overstated in our part-time help computation. So that 142,000 variance is going to go down to like 98,000, something of that magnitude. So we've already given you the good news.
Okay. Good afternoon, Councilwoman, Mayor.
Hey, ma'am.
I provided you with a PowerPoint presentation that I did not put up on the screen, instead I made you copies that you should have in front of you. It says Central Dispatch, Police and Fire. This is a little base history here. Jackson Central Dispatch has always dispatched for the police department. However, in 1994, June of 94, we assumed the roles of dispatching for the fire department. There was a total of 17 dispatchers and two supervisors. At the time, the fire department consisted of six dispatchers. There was dual roles with those dispatchers as well because they were actually firefighters. But there were six of them, and they did have a supervisor. They came over to the central dispatch area and conducted training with the police department dispatchers, and we took over dispatching fire in that year. The five firefighters returned to the line of duty. One civilian dispatcher stayed with the Jackson Police Department and became a dispatcher there. Next page over, I've got you a five-year synopsis down, laid out for you to the current date this year. Nineteen, five years from 1999, 94, excuse me, to 1999, there were increases of dispatchers to the amount of 22. However, during this timeframe, they ended up with 17 by 1999. Five years from that date, 2004, there was an increased range up to 20 operators. Then it decreased down to 18. Five years later, 2009, there were still the steady increases and the decreases of the dispatchers, which totaled out to 18 dispatchers that worked 24/7/365. Today's date, 2011, there are actually 17, I know I have 18 on there, but there are actually 17 full-time dispatchers. We just were fortunate enough to hire another operator, and she's in the month of being there with us currently. So that's where the 18th dispatcher comes from that worked these three shifts. Next page over is an information summary for the call volume per year. Call average day is anywhere from 200 to 400 calls that are received in the central dispatch area. 2007, if you notice, there's 189,416. 2008, 193,575. 2009 was 203,147. In 2010, the Positron system had a glitch, and it quit recording. So I had Positron and AT&amp;T to give me a base from their records that they could obtain for me, and they said I lost a total of about 25 percent. So that came out to an average of 220 calls, 211, 220,211 calls in 2010. And if you note there, April the 13th, when I ran this report, there was 26,460, which we've exceeded that now. These calls consist of incoming, outgoing, abandoned calls. Line consists of E-911 lines, administrative lines that we receive in dispatch. Also, Jackson Central Dispatch is the primary P-SAP. P-SAP stands for the Public Safety entering point for our jurisdiction in this area here. So anytime we have storms like we did last week, we're gonna receive 911 calls if an agency goes down like last week. Lake County got hit pretty bad with the tornadic weather that went through there. We received their 911 calls for quite a bit of period of time until they got back up and running. So anytime that a line does go down, Jackson Police Department Dispatch Center is the primary P-SAP, and it will roll over to them. There are also, we answer city line calls throughout the city. So if there, if City Hall happens to go down, they can revert over to central dispatch. If the Jackson Police Department goes down for any amount of time, they automatically roll over to dispatch. So we're receiving these calls. Next page I gave you is a printout of what I, we just discussed about the call volume. It's the call volume per year from the actual Positron computer system. Information summary, we have a computer-aided dispatching. So anytime we take dispatch calls into the central dispatch area, we're constantly putting those calls into a computer-aided dispatch system, which we dispatch out of. That just gives you a quote there. 2008, there were 109,574. In 2009, there were 98,693. If you notice in parentheses there, we, the police department, put a front desk officer on the front desk. This handled a lot of the CAD reports until they called us and asked for reports and really needed a reporter if they didn't need a report. So having a desk officer up front took a great deal of that away. 2010, 96, 387. This doesn't include other related CAD entries of officers checking 10-6 here, 10-6 there, just out with a citizen. Those are also other reports that we do put in the CAD system. These are actual offense reports that were conducted by the police department that were assigned by central dispatch. The Fire CAD report, 2170 for 2008, 2009 was 2012, 2010 was 2447. Here again, these are actual CAD reports that the fire department have to have a numeric on to submit them for their TIFIS reports.
What does CAD stand for again?
Sorry?
CAD, what does it stand for?
Computer-aided dispatching. Just a little bit, this is very minor, but it's very hot points for the dispatch duties and the responsibilities. There are three primary radio channels in central dispatch that an operator has to mandate in service 24/7. They consist of the primary police channel one, fire channel one, and then the NCIC computerized system, which is known as the National Information Crime Information System that we have. There are five accessible 911 lines. If those five lines are busy at any given time, we have designated it if a 911, somebody calls in on 911, these five lines are busy, they will roll over to an admin line automatically. So we have 10 administrative phone lines. We have, we manage and update the CAD system, computer-aided dispatching system. The GEO file, which is the street index, the locations of the streets, the cross streets, the hydrants, information that we have in there in the GEO file, we update it. Continuing on, we're able to receive, acknowledge, and transmit messages and data through the NCIC computer-aided system, which is a state and federally required system that the Jackson Police Department has to mandate, which is housed in our department as well. We make entries into the computer system. So if we have a stolen vehicle today, or five stolen vehicles today, they'll have to be entered today. So this takes up time for an operator to enter these. Also, wanted persons, missing persons, articles, TVs. If a house gets burglarized and the family members are able to provide us with serial numbers, we enter those into the system immediately as well. We've recently taken over doing sex offenders, which is a big task for us doing sex offenders. We validate those records monthly within the Jackson Police Department and central dispatch. We also have to comply with state and federal regulations, which consist of training. Those were just a few. Completion, year-to-date, 1994, increased the volume of calls for both service, police and fire. Increased the dispatch volume due to those calls for service, also due to the radio traffic being increased for those calls of service. Territories have increased throughout these years, 1994 to 2011, as far as annexation has occurred. There's been an increase of hiring for police officers and firefighters. Additional training is mandated for a public safety dispatcher by state and federal regulations, and it's hard to comply sometimes, but we do meet those. One thing, I am a state instructor as far as TBI is concerned, Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, and so the Jackson Police Department, we conduct our own NCIC training once every two years. When we hire a new operator, we conduct a 40-hour class with that new operator as well. We also get training through E-911. They help provide a lot of training for us, which you notice I don't have a training budget because 911 applies for, through their board, $20,000, because we're allocated $5,000 for each position that I have, and I have a total of five positions. So we're allocated that every year through the 911 Emergency Management Board, and that helps pay for our training a great deal of time. That is required for a public safety operator once every year, eight hours is required for all operators. Additionally, NCIC daily responsibilities that we just talked about, no contact orders under a domestic violence situation, needs to be entered under the protection orders. So we are constantly doing those on a daily basis when Judge Anderson issues those orders. Central Dispatch is the central nervous system of the city's emergency services. Employees' increase have occurred throughout the departments we serve except for central dispatch, and we are the voice on the other end of the line. Questions?
Any questions from council? For, I know while they're generating those questions, Al, do you wanna take just a second and tell us about your pending move and why?
Yes, sir. We came from a two-seating console area in 1994 in central dispatch to the second story of the ambulance building that sits at the corner of Institute and Auditorium Drive. Wonderful space, it was well worth it. We were totally excited about it in 1994, even to get outside and see some light. However, we have weathered tremendous storms, even though I have not been here for the last 10 years, I have worked them, 'cause I come in and worked when the state put us on standby, and I know what damage it did to the city. And it did bypass our building. But due to the fact that the operators were sitting there 24/7 because we cannot run to take cover, we have to sit there on that building floor and answer that phone because it is a major liability for 911 not to be answered for the city. So we have sat there and weathered the storms, and a couple of the operators have had issues with weathering the storms, and so we are fortunate enough, due to the mayor and the good graces of the city, that we're gonna probably get to move towards the end of the year to a single-story building. Can you tell where? We're going to 429 East Main Street, which is the JTA daycare center. And they're requesting that we leave the playground, but we are gonna be moving to a single-story building. Much more space, and the CAD, the consoles will be able to be designed and set up. And that's another thing, I do not have a capital currently because 911 pays for our console equipment, our furniture that our CAD system sits on. They pay for our telephone computer system, and they also pay for the 911 and the mapping system that we have. So I do not have a capital currently. I'm gonna leave that open. Next year may be different.
Well, the obvious reason for the move is on the second floor, and there is no safe room on the second floor of any building. And as Lenanda said, they, you know, they can't leave their console. They have to stay there 24/7 in the midst of, if you remember the tornado of 2003, it closed that place down, and they were, had to go over to the police department basement. So that's one of the reasons. And I think it will be well-served, the space is available, it's a bit larger space, it is on the ground floor, so, and it's a fairly, fairly new building.
And we will have a, we're still, I'm in the process of still doing the backup system where when we do, if we do take a hit anywhere in the city, then we will have a backup system in the basement of the police department that we can just walk into and sit down and turn on the computer and begin and continue dispatching like we're doing now, which is something that the city has not had, because we'd have to go out to the fire department and go back to handwriting and all that. So that is something that we will have before the year is out.
Any questions?
Could you repeat on the question I had about the salaries going up, $152,000? What you said earlier was that?
Well, there's a $44,000 duplication in there, so we will be reducing. Karen will be keeping track of all changes we make between the first and second year. And that 44,000, what is it, 221 or 121 will come out of?
221.
Well, I'm talking about, we duplicated it down here at the bottom, those two part-time.
Oh, excellent.
But it's roughly $44,000, and we will come out of that.
Out of the regular salaries?
Yes.
Okay. Are they still gonna make the regular salaries go up?
No, it'll be about 98,000, which she, I thought more than adequately explained the personnel staffing with-
Three additional salaries that I requested to bring us up to where we would have minimum staffing for all three shifts.
And I think she did a great job explaining that it's not just like I thought when I sat down with her the other day, just that they answer phones. They do a heck of a lot more than answer phones. And the coverage, the geographic has increased dramatically and is increasing as we speak with the Northwest annexation.
On the training end of it, do we do any training for outside agents or outside cities besides the city?
I do, well, we are what we call a, well, we service Madison County Sheriff Department as well. So because they're on our structured system, they're on our software and our system that we have here. So anytime Madison County hires an operator, Criminal Justice Complex, CJC Complex, they have an NCIC computer as well. Union University has a computer system, which they get limited, but they do have a computer system. So anytime that they hire an operator, then yes, sir, I can do instructing for them as well. So normally what we do is we hold one class, and we get with everybody instead. Do you happen to have a new one coming on? When do we need to do that? Because there is a state requirement, a federal requirement actually, that they have to be, once they're hired with the city as a dispatcher, they have to be certified within six months of employment.
Okay. But I was referring to Humboldt or somewhere like that? We don't do any training?
We have to say within our jurisdiction, yes, certain state requires that.
Okay. Any other questions of council? Okay, thank you, Lenanda.
Thank you.
Probably the best way to handle these others is just let me call the, we have planning next, don't we?
Yes. Basically, there's four areas in this one sheet here that we're talking about, public works, and that's planning, building, street department, engineering.
Okay.
Some of them have multiple line items.
What's, Al, what's correctional administration?
Correctional administration is our community services department. Judge Anderson assigns people to, and it's handled through Chief Campbell, Chief Kendrick.
Okay.
I skipped over that, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay, I just, I don't have any questions on it, I just wonder what it was.
Okay, any questions on planning? We'll call stand-up there is.
I had, is that 38, page 38, planning and zoning?
I searched bottom page 37.
I got a couple of questions on there.
Okay, Stan?
What's the reimbursable planning act?
This is the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. That's the grant that we get from the state to do transportation planning, and we expend the expenses, and then we're reimbursed for those for any activities we spend doing transportation planning.
Okay, we're reimbursed 100%? Okay, we're reimbursed a hundred percent on that, or?
It's a eighty-twenty grant, but the twenty percent is not cash, it's like in-kind, because we pay our salaries, the city pays our salaries, but we get reimbursed for the hours that we spend on transportation. So, that's kind of our match, we don't have any cash match on that.
Building is not him, is it?
No, building.
That's not. That was all I had on the plan?
Okay, any, yeah, go ahead.
Training travel, that was an increase in the number of dollars, maybe not the number of dollars that.
No, it's the same, it's the same amount. We're mandated by the state to provide training to all of our boards and commission members. They have to have so many hours per year, and also the planners have to be trained and have to perform so many hours a year to be certified. So, that's what that's for, and we try to utilize the most cost-effective training method. But as you've seen with the demise of local planning, where the state has eliminated that whole department, that training we get through, you know, the training services that the state provides, it may not always be there, so that money is there in case the training wasn't available, or that wasn't available where they could get to it locally, that we would have that money to take our commissions to that training required.
Can we schedule that in Vegas next year?
I'm open to whatever y'all want to do.
Hawaii?
Okay, any other questions? Stan, which other, which other of these funds, Al, would we?
Al, I think we should go to Building Department, with Tom Winbush.
Any other, any other questions, Stan, while he's there? Okay, thanks, Stan.
Thank you.
Any questions on the Building Department budget?
Which encompasses housing codes and the...
I guess I'll fall back to my benefits that, in the Building Department, the...
What page are you on, Randy?
I'm on page thirty-nine.
Okay.
The regular salaries went up four thousand dollars, but the benefit dropped twenty-seven thousand dollars. That looked unusual to me.
Well, I know we did have a situation where we also have two new employees in a violent crime grant, and the money for their benefits was put into either building or housing, and that's supposed to be adjusted.
But now, wouldn't the salaries go in, those other departments also?
Yeah, those two salaries go in target community and benefits. Well, however, we did find that some of the benefits for last year were overstated, and again, we based the benefits when they were calculated on the positions field in April when the budgets were submitted. So, if any additions in salaries have been made, that's not been accounted for, because the mayor had given us the directions, everything would stay the same. So, we'll review those, but it's based on the positions that are currently filled with the calculation of the benefits.
Okay, okay. He's not garage operations, is he?
No.
Do you want to be garage operator?
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Winbush, building and housing and codes? If not, thank you, sir.
Can we let him off easy?
Well, it was easy, he's easy. He's easy.
Public service complex is really Kathleen, but I think we can catch that when we do her health and sanitation.
Okay, all right. Street lighting, stormwater is all under engineering?
Engineering, that would be a good time for that to come up.
Also, guys, we've got traffic signs, traffic signalization, city engineering, energy and efficiency grant, the last one down, I'm using page seven kind of as my guide if y'all...
That goes from page sixty-eight to seventy-eight, basically, all those budgets are covered in operation.
Scott, just give us the, give us the budgets that you, that you have, and just point out anything that looks a little strange, if you would.
Wait, wait just one second, your numbers are different from what Scott...
I was gonna say.
I'm not sure what numbers he has. Actually, his budget for street lighting starts on page forty-one in your expenses.
Ah, that is different from that.
Scott.
Wrong page.
It's the same data, but it's open on different.
Okay. Then I told you the wrong page. Starting with street lighting, we basically busted the same amount as we did last year. I always keep up with projects that are, additional lighting projects is coming online. However, I found out that it's good for the city, but JEA waits until they get their final bills paid for a project before they start putting them on the city's account to be in build. And so, I basically planned for several projects to come online this previous year. They're just now coming online now. So, we'll probably come in a little over or under budget this year as we close, so we feel pretty comfortable that we can stick with that same number for FY twelve.
How about for the annexed area, are we calculating that in also, or?
Well, once again, if we was to start adding lights today for the annexed area, by the time it's booked, it's probably gonna be in a future fiscal year. So, I feel like we, you know, we may be adding lights this year, but they more than likely won't ever get billed and show up in our budget till a future fiscal year.
So, next year we may need to go up a little bit for that, but not this year?
Correct, right, you'll see in future years those increases, but for this year, I think we're okay with leaving it the same.
If I'm correct, and what we're saying, and I'm still thinking that this is all gonna be distributed over a ten-month period, we got two months going on, we're still under budget by about, maybe fifteen, sixteen thousand, no, I'm sorry, a little bit more than that.
For street lighting, the...
A hundred thousand dollars.
We have a lot less amount of energy we're using during these months as we do in the winter months, so...
Yeah, I've driven down Highland. I've driven down Highland, from Parkway to the hospital, there's no streetlights. Not your fault. Just thought I'd let you know.
There are streetlights that just need to be repaired.
They need to be turned on.
Yeah, repaired.
Well, and I think JEA is experiencing some, with all the storm damage and everything. We've seen a lot of lights on during the day and maybe off during the night, and I know they've fluctuated a lot, we've received lots of calls about that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The next is the stormwater program operating budget. That's basically not what you would think as far as fixing stormwater problems, but we're required, because we're a certain population, to have a permit that we have with the state that requires us to provide a certain amount of education and do a certain amount of, you know, community involvement-type things during the year. And it's basically a stormwater program, that's what this budget covers. It's basically everything we need as far as dollar-wise to carry out what's required from the grant each, or not the grant, but the permit each year.
Okay, that's a state requirement that we do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we get any money from the state for doing?
Any more questions on that? Next is traffic sign. And that's basically our operating and supplies for keeping up the city's sign infrastructure and keeping up to date with the manual and uniform traffic control devices. There have been some new requirements come out regarding the reflectivity of the signs, and we're gonna have to assess all the signs and come up with a program to keep track of how old they are and whether they meet those minimum reflective requirements. You'll see here in a minute, we've got something in capital that we're gonna have to purchase to keep us in compliance on that, but that's basically our traffic sign operating budget. Y'all have any questions on those?
What's the department on that?
What changed?
Yeah.
Uh, that's on page forty-five.
Okay.
Page forty-five, seven.
Just give me a second.
I would like to point out, too, that we do handle our pavement markings, our annual pavement markings for the streets in this budget. I don't know exactly why, but it's always been in there, and...
Pavement markings is in the sign department?
It is. I think primarily because our traffic sign department used to maintain the striping as they could. As the city's grown, we do have a contractor that comes out and stripes our streets for the most part, and our sign department does some of the smaller jobs. So, that line item, two-ninety contractual services, that's sixty-three thousand five hundred, that's a, that's a traffic mark, comes in and straps our city streets with that budget.
Can we change that, traffic sign department, to be traffic sign marking or something, or?
We can change it to whatever you want to.
Something appropriate.
I mean, they do traffic signs, as well as the signs as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if they do the signs and the pavement marking, then if we could reword that, traffic sign markings or something, or traffic, yeah.
Well, let Scott decide.
Pavement markings or...
We can put a special maybe line item under traffic sign that it just says pavement marking. Instead of contractual services, it's just been under that, but that's what it is used for. Moving on to traffic signalization.
That's forty-five to forty-six, very bottom of forty-five to top of forty-six.
Mm-hmm.
We basically budget each year for JEA to provide maintenance of the signal system. We do have some professional services in there. We try to look to re-timing our signals, especially the ones in coordination, look for traffic growth and trends that change, and try to keep our signals operating as efficiently as possible. And then, and then basically the amount of utilities, electricity that's needed to power the signal through the year.
The professional services, no, I'm sorry, wrong one, wrong question, excuse me.
Okay.
There is a professional service, but there is no, there's no expenses against that. Do we normally do our own professional work on that? I mean, our own engineering on that particular project, on those projects?
We do.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I don't wanna bring it up again, but engineering, the same thing I've got is the employee benefits, dropped considerably, and the salaries didn't drop at all, so...
One thing, Councilman Wallace, that we noted, and I think Sam and I discussed it, some of the benefits were overstated last year, so if you're seeing a decrease this year, it's where we went back, because I think the FICA had been calculated for both employer and employee in last year, and we noticed that when we were going through some of the budgets this year. So, I did think about that after you asked about the last one.
Okay. I won't ask about that anymore.
Feel free to continue asking. We do make mistakes, I assure you.
Because we don't calculate that individually.
All right, I knew it was your fault, that's why I was telling...
That's right, and you know I'm more than likely to take mine.
Then our engineering budget is forty-three eight hundred, I'm not sure what page it's...
Uh, that would be...
Forty-six, forty-seven, forty-six, forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
And that's got our office staff salaries and...
And again, what's there on the decrease there is the employee benefits of...
Mm-hmm. The professional services that we use there, is that the engineering firm that we use for...
Well, I, basically, anything that comes up, it would be, wouldn't be, you know, anywhere from traffic studies, drainage analysis, drafting services, cross-descent data collection. We do, you know, a lot in-house, but then if there's any big items that's needed in a hurry, we can, we do use Neil Schaefer a lot, because they're an on-call contract, but we, that's not the only one, it's just a general line item to call on professional services through the year. And then the Brownsville Cleanup Grant, it's up there, but there's no budget for it. It's pretty well complete, we had that last year. And then the Energy and Efficiency Grant, we're currently changing out LEDs in the traffic signals around town. Some of you may have noticed the countdown pedestrian indications downtown, that's part of that. And then also some improvements to the Civic Center, and y'all, y'all basically been abreast as we progress that through, but that'll roll over and have a budget for next year as well. And that grant is fully funded by stimulus dollars, so there was no match to the city's, completely reimbursable. It's pretty well at operating.
If there's no questions operations-wise, I think we need to address the capital.
How about the, how about the Energy and Efficiency Grant? Is that under capital?
That's what I just mentioned, there's no capital with that, it's just the, it's an operating grant, it's fully funded by the stimulus dollars, and it's gonna basically carry over into this next year. The total grant was six hundred and seventy thousand. We will have spent all but what we're projecting to be two hundred and fifty thousand by the end of June.
Back to a question we had earlier, the total grant was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we got that a couple of years back?
We did.
And we showed expenses six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on our statement then, because that's what the authors want us to do?
We show the total amount received of the grant. When I bring a budget amendment to you for a grant, it's for the full amount of the grant, for whatever the life of the grant is.
Okay, but now the expenses, though, do we just show what we anticipated, we're gonna...
No, for the budget, we show whatever is remaining in the grant. We budget the amount for the grant each year, as far as total grant period, total grant period.
And that two hundred and fifty thousand is our best guess to, I mean, there's construction going on at Civic Center, and we did our best guess at where they will be at by June thirtieth, and then we'll have the new budget here. If we overshoot that, we may have to come back and reconcile that for the exact figures during the year.
Two components of that, the Civic Center modifications on their peating and lighting and the LED traffic.
That's correct, that's right. I think it was about a sixty-forty flip between the two projects, sixty being going for the Civic Center and the rest going to LEDs.
And switching to capital, we've got summary here, starting with street resurfacing. And again, let me explain, there might be a little confusion here, because...
Do you want to go, I've marked the items, if we...
You can show them, the same thing I was gonna show them, that we're talking, we broke up capital basically by the source of the funds, and Scott, if you want to go ahead and address your quote-unquote, you know, bond funding capital items first.
Yeah, I think, I think all of my items in capital will be funded from the borrowed funds. I highlighted each one of these that would pertain to, you know, street projects and resurfacing. If you add these numbers up, you will get a amount of five million for nine forty-three, six eighty-two. That's a two-year plan, and I've submitted, basically, I'm planning to do the three million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth the first year, and the remaining two and a half million the next year.
Scott, as it relates to your street restoration and your street resurfacing, we have these paving companies that have put in the overlays, you know, over the last two or three years. Is there any warranty because they're sinking? I counted about thirty-two on last week, they're sinking down.
Yeah, you mentioned that earlier to me, and any repair that's made has a three-year warranty that we do with pavement restorations, and so if we know about them, we see them, we do have a, do a follow-up during that three-year range to check them. If they're fine, then obviously the three-year warranty after the third year is void. But during that three-year period, we can track back to see and have a contractor come back and fix it.
They're all over the city, they're sinking. Also, as it relates to, I don't know if it's you or Street Department, if it relates to potholes, our city has, you know, I know we had bad weather, but we have a turtle. We look like New Orleans or Chicago, potholes. we look like New Orleans or Chicago, potholes situation.
Well, the arrangement.
Is that under you or?
It's, it's kind of a combination, uh, Gary, uh, Gary's people handle any minor potholes, uh, I do think they bought a truck, uh, that they're fixing to get, so they may handle, uh, you know, the majority of the minor potholes, but, uh, uh, pavement restoration is a co, is the company comes in and repairs the, the more major ones, and has the heat truck that can heat it up and tie it in real smooth, um, so, I mean, we'll, we'll still have the ongoing contract with them, but it's a combination between the two departments.
We'll be very appreciative of, uh, Mr. LaFargee and Mr. Chandler working with those, uh, those street problems, because our streets are the worst I've seen in years.
Yeah.
When it comes to, to, uh, yes, sir, Mr. LaFargee.
Or we, uh, probably half of those are J D A cuts, because they're, they're cutting the streets too, and, uh, so it's, it's coordination between J D A or us, as to who made those street cuts.
Well, they, they're all sinking down.
I had, you should, so Scott, I had just a quick question, um, relative to the street resurfacing, are we using the same procedure where we will identify, um, streets that need to be repaved or resurfaced, and get that list to you on a, I guess, a yearly basis, and they'll be evaluated and then maybe done the next year?
That is correct, and, uh, we're working on a project now, I do have some streets identified, uh, for this first year's paving, I speak with some of you, try to call and, and see if, you know, what your input is, but, uh, we basically get calls through the year, we keep a running list, we go out and try to look at, uh, all of them and compare, and, and look at the amount of traffic that's on them and the condition they're in, uh, and try to fit the project to the money that we have in the best manner.
Okay, thanks.
But yeah, any concerns with streets that y'all feel, uh, need to be looked at by our department, just call or email us, and, and we'll be out there checking it out.
Question, the two million that we're looking at either this year or in the next two years, are these going to be existing streets, this resurfacing, these are all just existing streets?
Yes.
None of these streets are the streets that we're going to annex then?
Well, if, uh, I mean, as soon as, uh, there are now streets that are in the city, and so we will be assessing them, uh, as we do all our city streets, and, uh, that will be streets that, that could be on the next paving list as well.
One other comment, these dates over here, uh, estimated completion dates were just dates that we gave the, uh, we gave Kevin Barnett when he was working with underwriters on the bond issue, they're not cast in concrete, and they're probably not the best intelligent guess, so I think Scott understands that, that was just.
Right.
Guidelines we put in there.
We do plan on moving forward with, uh, as many of those as we can, uh, the design of F E right drive, uh, that's actually a match, uh, that will involve some state transportation funds, um, which we accrue each year, so, uh, we've got that as planned for the F Y thirteen, um, Chester Street Phase Two, uh, in this year's capital budget, uh, we've got it four hundred and twenty-five thousand in for the design and right-of-way purchase, but that's a hundred percent reimbursable, so you won't see, um, any city match going toward that, but you do see the two hundred forty-three thousand six eighty-two, that's a match for the construction, uh, which we feel like will, will be in F Y thirteen, uh, so that's when you'll see that come in. The Royal Street and the traffic signal at Highland and De Mumbrough, uh, we plan to move forward with this in F Y twelve, and then also half of the, roughly half of the two-year, uh, paving needs, uh, out of four point six million.
Okay, any other questions from Council?
Just one last question, has, has to do with the, uh, the Bahaway forty-five bypass at, I guess, the Old Country Store, that's a project that's been worked on both by the Planning Department, and I'm sure you looked at it too, where do we stand on that? Do you know?
Yes, uh, the, I guess you're talking about the extension of the bypass, um, it's in environmental phase right now, they're doing the environmental assessment, uh, as soon as that's complete, then that, that environmental assessment will tell them what alternatives are the best alternative, uh, for choosing for the construction of corridor for construction, uh, once we get that, then we will start trying to get the state to find, get the funding to, to move to construction.
Now, are you talking about Casey Joan?
Yes.
They, they also did a transportation study on, on that interchange at Casey Joan Village, and, uh, I'm not sure that that's moved.
It's, it's still in design, uh, they added the, when they were going in and looking at it, they added the, uh, the ramps at the interstate, because the, the ramps were very close, and there was such a tight weave when people coming out of that ramp trying to get over for Carriage House, it was such a tight weave, and you were crossing so many lanes, that they decided since they were going to be reworking the intersection, they would go back and look at the interstate modification too, so they included that in the design, and that's, so that's kind of pushed it a little bit, but they will be moving the ramp back, so that you, when you come out of the ramp, uh, you will have more distance to get into the lanes and get, get over if you want to go to Carriage House.
Both of those projects are still in the planning stages, moving toward design, uh, both the bypass extension and.
And the forty-five south.
In that design standard, is it three or five years the state has indicated they're going to six-lane the interstate?
Yes, sir.
And, and redesign and reconfigure all the interchanges on about three, three of the interchanges off the interstate to the city?
That's their, that's their projected timeframe, you know, and as you know, it's subject to change, but, but that's our plan, and, and, uh, we, you know, those are very needed projects, all of our ramps, systems that we have with our interchanges are based on the old cloverleaf design, which was a very inefficient design, and it takes a lot of room, so they're, they're looking at going to more of a, a diamond, urban diamond, which is more the preferred design right now, which should, uh, help in a lot of areas in, in providing a better in and out, because right now, as you well know, the coming in and going out part is, is righted together, I mean, somebody coming down the ramp and somebody coming in almost, uh, intersect with each other, so it's not a very safe situation, so hopefully with the redesign, we'll get a safer situation for those ramps.
Okay, any other, any questions of Scott? If not, we'll go on to, uh, Street Department, Street Maintenance, Street Cleaning, uh, what else?
The only other one other than, uh, Gary LaFargee would be Rodney Todd.
Right, yeah, let's get, let's get Gary, um, Phil, man, Gary, come on up, and if y'all have any questions on street, uh, street maintenance, street cleaning.
Street maintenance is page forty-two.
Forty-three one ninety.
That's correct, forty-three one ninety.
You got afternoon, Gary.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Your, your street maintenance as well as, SSA street maintenance, that you also?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's funded, it comes from the.
State gas tax.
State gas tax.
Street construction, forty-three nine hundred, street cleaning is forty-three one ninety-five.
Building street material, uh, I guess one of the things that, that, uh, it's going to, it gets on my goat these days is, uh, the alleyways, with the alleyways. I have a new, I have a new microphone, excuse it, the alleyways themselves, are we going, are we planning or doing anything in regards to those alleyways as far as maintaining those this year, as far as the streets repaving?
Yeah, as they come up, we've got, uh, one or two that we will be resurfacing, uh, of cour, of course, we maintain them with the mowing.
When asked.
Yeah, when asked, an alley is not a big priority to us.
Okay.
We are keeping our streets open and clear, however, uh, they, they get pretty bad in drainage and, and, uh, and surface, so we do have to go in and do those. Now, we do the surfacing on that, uh, rather than engineering.
Right, uh, where is that in our line item as far as monies are concerned, is that four hundred?
Yeah, that would be billing supplies.
Building supplies, because we're, we do our own mixing.
We've got our own labor, which comes out.
And so, this last year, the last ten months, we spent sixty thousand, and we're going to spend sixty-six, is that correct?
I didn't hear you answer.
Or, I'm sorry, we only spent sixty, we've, so far, we've only spent, uh, well, sixty-one thousand dollars, and I'm not sure if I've got this page listed on that, hold on one second, how much, what are we budgeting this year?
This year, uh, for F Y twelve, we're budgeting thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-one down from sixty-six thousand.
So, we're not going to be really doing many, like, streets, are we?
Well, it, are you talking about?
Or alleys, yeah.
SSA?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you will look, that was added, they gave us a number, and we can lump them in, so within the three budgets, uh, we would have shifted that back into, uh, the street construction.
Oh, okay.
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 Which page is street construction on?
Uh, he's looking at, uh, we're looking at four-three one ninety, four hundred, which is material.
Street constructions, page forty-seven, forty-eight.
Yeah, and then forty-seven, forty-eight for the other.
What, what Gary means is SSA has to stay within the confines of the revenue that comes from the state, uh, several years ago, the state street aid was a separate fund, and the state allowed us to roll it into the general fund, but the requirement is, is that the expenditures cannot exceed the revenue that comes in from the gas tax, so he had to shift some expenditures to other departments, such as street construction, street cleaning, because state street aid taxes are down from where they were in previous years.
And street construction does show an increase there of, uh, almost six percent.
Yeah, I think that's the part that worries me, is we're, we're not funding them well enough in order to, to handle some of these minor, and we're talking about minor things.
You repaved, what, ninety-five percent of the alleys in the city over the past three or four years?
None that I've been down.
Uh, I would hate to say, most of the alleys, we, we have paved probably four or five since I've been with the Street Department over the last ten years. Like I say, the alleys basically aren't a, a priority to us, and we use the, the paving on some of the other things that we have to get into.
I guess my point is, on this point, and I've made this to, to a couple of people before, is, is if we're not going to maintain them, then we close them.
Well, yeah, if, if they're not being used.
Yeah. Are you sweating over there? Okay. I have no questions, I just, I'm just making a point, it just doesn't seem like we're going to give you enough money to operate, right?
Well, we're doing, in my opinion, we're operating pretty much at the staffing level that we have now.
You can always talk to the state about their state aid, upping it for us would help. Uh, any other questions of Gary, while you're up? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Gary.
Anything on capital?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, for capital, yeah.
Starts at the bottom there, doesn't it, the state street maintenance, and, uh, page four also, page, page four is where there's the, the heavy hitters as far as the, uh, three-ton truck, so you may want to just address the big ones, Gary, or however you want to.
Well, we've got a, uh, let's see, the first four are just basic things to replace some of the stuff we've got that's worn out, we do have a, a pull truck, which is basically one of our, uh, two-ton asphalt cells for a small bed, that we're going to use to pull that trailer, the pothole patch trailer that we have, uh, this is a very nice system, uh, rather than just throwing in, uh, cold patch or hot patch into a hole and stepping on it, trying to make it stay, this machine comes equipped, it allows us to get two or four tons of, of hot asphalt, maintain the temperature, we can maintain that temperature overnight, it's electric, uh, it's got hydraulic, uh, uh, stampers, uh, it's got the cutting saws, uh, compressed air on these things, and a place to put the, uh, the old material, uh, so it's a handy little, a little deal that is really going to help us.
And that piece of equipment been ordered a year, hadn't it, still hasn't gotten it?
It, uh, there was a fallout between us and, uh, purchasing, we thought they'd ordered it, they thought we did, so it didn't get ordered until January.
We don't want to go there, it's one of those, it's taken a year, if they make one a year, or if that's, they make others?
Well, he's a Texan boy, he understands you've got to get it in before July first.
Okay, okay.
What, the, the security system for the public services buildings?
Yes, sir.
Is that just for the street cleaning buildings?
That's for the whole complex, the public service building, uh, there on, at one-eighty Canal Code.
Seems, of course, everything seems high to me while I look at city services, but forty-five thousand dollars for security system seems on the high side, but I'm assuming we'll get it for the best.
Well, we've got cameras, we, I, I, I'm rather concerned with our staff, um, and there's a lot of meanest out there, and, and concerned that they are on the firing line, people can come and go out of that building, uh, can do what they want to the staff up front, uh, we did have a scare, um, back several months ago, where somebody came in and, uh, a young man that's well-known to the city came in and, um, he was, uh, looking for another employee, and we finally, finally had to threaten him, get him out, um, and that really concerned the ladies that are up front, so we're looking at some sort of a, a control in the access, who comes and goes within the building, uh, plus cameras and plus some sort of a monitor system, uh, within that, and, uh, to make this happen, uh, actually, it's kind of two-pronged, our camera system in the, in the garage and in the police impound, and in our lot, equipment lot are, uh, very deficient, you, you can barely tell what color the equipment is coming in, you can make no other distinction, uh, so the resolutions are very poor, and those really need to be upgraded to some cameras that, that would make a difference.
Question later, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Gary, thank you.
I think Rodney Todd would be the next one, if there's any questions on the city garage.
Guys, if y'all have any questions about city garage operations, Mr. Todd is here.
Page forty-four and forty-five.
Are we, uh, charging for our services for the departments that we use to garage services?
I'm sorry?
Are we charging for the services to the departments that use garage services, the police department, or, or, where does that show up in our revenue budget?
It, it does not show up in our revenue budget, it shows up in Rodney's budget, it's a contract account, and it's in offsetting account, services charged to others.
And which page is that on?
That's on page forty-four, object code one-nineteen, salaries charged to other departments, and we increase that labor rate about every two to three years, adjusted as what's charged out to departments.
Okay, we're still ending up with three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in expenses in garage operations, why are we not charging all their costs out?
Remember, we, we've discussed this in previous years, not all of it is charged out, not all of it, as Rodney said, is, is sometimes accounted for, you might want to address that a little bit, but.
Well, right, right now, we're at eighteen eighty-four, uh, and, and we don't like to sub out work, but when we do, I subbed out a job not long ago, and they charge us a hundred bucks an hour, so we, we're, we're not anywhere near where we ought to be, but if we go up on our labor rate much, it kills everybody else's budget, the way I said.
It's all coming out of the city coffers one way or another, whether it's in your budget, our budget.
Right, right.
My, my concern is, if we don't charge, the garage services are not charging the rates to the departments, we want to, we don't know how much the departments are actually spending on repairs and maintenance, and then the other concern I've got is, how do we know whether we wouldn't be better off, you know, farming our, our repair work out to, you know, Joe's Auto, Auto Service. And then the other concern I've got is, how do we know whether we wouldn't be better off, you know, farming our repair work out to, you know, Joe's Auto, Auto Service or whatever?
I'm not sure if the authority make that decision, I don't believe it does.
I guess that's my type of concern.
Let us make ten percent. With our own trucks.
Is that, is that we, we don't know how much our individual departments are costing us, we're not charging those services out.
No, we do. It could be the police department. They were doing that at, say, volunteer international friendship. There, there's no doubt in my mind, they pay a lot more, we don't make anything on parks. We don't make anything on anything, we're charging eighteen-eighty-four currently.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's something, I don't guess we can, we can address that future of the year for future. But that is one of my concerns, is that we don't know that for sure and that we, we're not allocating our expenses out to departments where they belong by not charging the garage services out, obviously should be, so.
I had a quick question, if I could, Mr. Todd.
Yes, sir.
Relative to the fuel and oil costs, our basies of most of the departments, I'm sure you're expecting an increase over this year. How much are you paying for diesel right now?
That's a good question, I meant to look this morning before I came. If I'm not mistaken, the last diesel we bought was three-fifty.
Three-fifty, okay.
And the last gas was three-ten, I think, in that range. And who knows what the top's going to be?
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, we're all speculating.
Right.
And this line item represents only what you all are using in your department.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Ernest, Rodney did give us a figure that he projected, and of course, it's only as good as the paper.
It's written.
No, because it changes.
Right, yeah.
But that's where we try, we increased the police department by eighty-five thousand, we increased Gary's by eighteen. So, those were the big users we did.
Uh-huh, okay, well, I guess if we could guess that right, we would be somewhere else.
Right.
Making a whole lot of money.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now, as far as the capital, if you look at the garage items, you might want to explain to them.
Okay, what's the garage items for capital? Unfortunately, it looks like they're going to, I say unfortunately, it depends on your point of view. The police need a bunch of cars, we know that, they probably need more than thirty-two, that's, that's what they're asking for, and that's a good thing for us. But what that causes for us, they're cheaper on the front end, but on the back end, we've got to pay some additional cost. Right now, we don't have a current diagnostic tester of any kind for Chrysler, and it's going to be about forty-five hundred, just so we can check the computer controls and all that. The good news is they're under warranty for a pretty good while, so that'd help us. We're just getting ready to upgrade our Ford diagnostic equipment, and now we will have Ford and Chrysler to deal with, and a few GMs. The lift, the nine-thousand rubber, what that is, we have three two-post lifts, and I don't know exactly how old these are. They were old when I got there, and I've been, been there since two thousand and four. The one that I want to replace, I've had a guy, he's repaired it a time or two, and he's qualified. But every time you raise a car, it cries and moans and groans, and I'm some concern about it. My guys are under that every day. What I'd like to do is replace those three over the next three years, is what I'd like to do. And then on, on heavy-duty trucks, we don't have anything really. And I would like to, I'd like to do that, get some diagnostic equipment on, on international, in particular, Freightliner, we have several of those. The, the issue for us now on, on anybody's cars is they're all going to the laptop. And then you buy the software from the specific manufacturer to diagnose the problem, so it's going to, going to create some heartburn when we go to Dodge. We like Dodge, love them, but it is going to cost extra on the back.
Any other questions?
So, from, from a maintenance standpoint, if the city said, okay, we're going to only buy Fords, would it make it easier on the maintenance?
Absolutely. And there's many reasons for that, if you'd like me to explain, I'd be glad to.
Well, I guess I can see that, you know, every car's manufactured differently and.
Well, for one, you get the test equipment from one source. You, you have, with Ford and GM, the fact of the matter is you have more sources for parts. On Chrysler, if it's an original equipment part, you get it from Chrysler, and that's it. With Ford, you've got Motocraft, and there's a lot of Motocraft dealers around, and Motocraft is the same as original equipment. Same thing with GM, with GM, the F Delco. But with Chrysler, you're going to pay more for tires, no doubt. You're going to pay more for brake rotors and drums and shoes. Most anything that we, that we have to buy from Chrysler is going to be more because you've got one source. Now, some things you can buy from a local NAP or whoever it is, a lot that you can't. So, I'm a little hesitant. I will support the police, and we will, we've already had a meeting with the chief and Chief Campbell and everybody involved, and we're going to support whatever they do.
Don't think we're going to quit making the Crown Vic.
Well, that, yes, sir.
That could impact what kind of car we get.
Yes, sir, that's exactly right.
Okay, any other questions of Rodney? We finished up, we finished up your cap, Rodney, y'all finished up the cap? Okay, thank you, thank you, Rodney.
So, we basically finished up Public Works, and once again, as you saw from the front sheet, almost every total by category is, is red, meaning it's decreased. So, we looked at Public Works and it's down five-twenty-eight, partially because of Scott's energy grant progression. But even without that, the Public Works would be down two-hundred and some odd thousand. So, now, Mayor, if you want, we can look at Recreation.
Where's Health and Sanitation? We've got to get Kathleen out of here because we've got a bunch of debris in the city and she's responsible for cleaning up the storm.
Well, then let's get Kathleen up.
Kathleen, would you come on up so you can go back to work? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Congressman.
Good afternoon.
Do you want to look at the public service complex from Public Works?
We skipped over that before, if you want to look at that, Mayor, that's.
Public Service Complex?
It's page forty and forty-one. Sales is on page forty, and the rest are on page forty-one.
It's only a one percent increase, but.
Forty-one-nine-twenty, nine-two. Major increase there was in utilities.
Okay, what is the Public Service Complex and where is it?
One-eighty South Canalco, just down from Garage, and we've got Health and Sanitation, Recreation and Parks, and the Street Department. It's the same building that Gary's talking about for the security system. The security system.
All right, we got an increase in salaries of sixty-nine percent, I'm assuming there could be another position or half a position or something? In Public Service Complex?
I'm not sure about that because even though it comes out of this budget, I don't, I don't manage those people. Managed by Recreation.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, that budget is not managed by, by you, Anthony, you can.
Well, the thing is, is when I got the two-part, the two-part, I'm thinking of people. I've been paying them out of Recreation, I mean, we do their payroll, but the money, I guess, both come out of Public Service, but we do the payroll and send it in to Recreation.
Well, they've only expended twelve thousand directly.
Right, right.
I'll make that a note to check on that one.
Yeah, assuming that it's getting transferred over, or they are holding, but leaving the payroll.
They do the payroll.
Because there, those parks are going, even if we are going to contact this too, but.
Okay, Karen, so you're going to, you're going to chase that one down, okay. Okay, Kathleen, go ahead and.
I'm open for questions.
What page is your budget on?
She, hers are in the other funds, the bank fund one-thirty-one, that's Health and Sanitation and Animal Control.
Basically, one-liners. But we have the details, which Kathleen's ready to address there.
All right, what page is that on?
That's going to be in your other funds, the very last section of your book, and it's going to follow Fund one-twenty-five.
Okay.
And Fund, which is Fund one-thirty-one.
All right, you're not Jackson City Beautiful anymore, then either are you. You're just not in charge of anything anymore, are you?
I'm just not, you're right.
All right, okay.
Health and Sanitation, just to look in the ordinance itself, because it is a special revenue fund, is not shown with the general fund, and it's what I call a one-liner. Basically, revenues and expenses do match. And let Kathleen address the areas of, basically, tonnage has been down this year. And we are hauling less, so all of our expenses would be down, but then again, our revenue is down because that's what we pass on. The things that we need to look at, in my opinion, would be the fuel surcharge, which we're running, what, Kathleen, about twenty thousand a month right now?
Last month was twenty-two thousand.
That's A2 Waste Management, when the national average for diesel hits three-seventy.
Two-seventy-one.
Two-seventy, yeah. Rodney may be paying a different number, but.
We did not budget for the annexation for the revenue, but the expense there will be offset by the billing. Residential billing is down, but that's, the commercial billing is up. Had a lot of cost in equipment, our equipment is old, looking to get some new equipment this next year. Any other questions?
I do, I just, I'm trying to just sort through this one. One of the things that was brought up, were a couple of questions, calls that I had gotten in regards to animal control. We don't operate animal control during weekends, is that correct? We don't staff it?
Yes, it is staffed twenty-four-seven, but the calls come in through JPD.
Okay, so they're, they're staffing it after hours?
No, we staff it.
We staff it?
We staff.
And there's somebody there twenty-four-seven?
Yes.
Weekends and?
Yes.
Our budget for this year for animal control is projected at ninety-four thousand dollars, ninety-five. Spent forty-three, is there something that, is there salaries or something that I'm missing here?
One of the animal control officers is on military leave. We budgeted for three, but we're only paying two salaries.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, could, could we, could we take a section out of order? I believe Councilman Buchanan may be having to leave to go to work. I was wondering if we could take up the city council budget?
Sure.
Next.
Any, any objection to that, to go ahead and go to the city council budget? May remind the council, it's going to take five votes to move ahead, or we can come back again and continue and finish this, whatever the council's preference is.
We could, I'd like to take up the city council budget.
Sure, okay. Any objection? Let's go to city council budget, then.
And at the appropriate time, Mayor, I'd like to be recognized for a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion relative to the city council budget to increase the travel and training line item from the one-thousand-five-hundred to seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars for the two thousand and twelve budget year.
Okay, we have, we have that as, it's just a change in the budget, has not been adopted yet, so really, I guess council can go ahead and, and vote with the change just presented by Councilman Brooks. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second in discussion on the motion. You want to state it one more time, Councilman, if you would?
That we would increase the line item on travel and training in the city council budget from one-thousand-five-hundred to seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars for the two thousand and twelve in this budget year.
Okay.
Mayor, point of clarification, the current city.
We've got forty-five, twenty-one in there.
Forty-five, twenty-one, I'm sorry.
Forty-five, twenty-one in there currently.
Currently.
And Councilman Brooks' motion is to increase that to seven.
To seven-thousand-five-hundred.
To seven-thousand-five-hundred, okay.
Have you got something anticipated, Councilman Brooks?
Well, actually, I do, I'm serving actually on two steering committees with the National League of Cities, Energy, Natural Resources and Environment Committee, as well as Youth Education and Families. In the past, I know not very many councilmen have taken advantage of some of the opportunities that are available within the National League of Cities or even in our own state organization, Tennessee Municipal League. And there are just not enough monies to, to do the things that we need to do.
Do they help cover any of the travel expenses or entirely up to the cities?
For, for the most part, it's entirely up to the cities.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, we have a second in discussion. Council, please vote.
We have five yes and one no.
Okay. That change is approved by council? Okay, let's, let's continue on with, I think Recreation Parks next, isn't it?
Yes.
Public Buildings, let me just go down these, and if you all, you all have a copy of the budget, if anything jumps out at you, we can call up that particular apartment head, Tony is, is here now. As far as Public Buildings, Civic Center, first one, point four-five percent.
Which page are we going to find?
That's page fifty-four and fifty-five.
Fifty-four and fifty-five?
Fifty-four and fifty-five.
Recreation as a total in here.
Good evening, Mr. Councilman, Mayor. Some of it's more than just those four departments, and some of them are the public buildings.
Okay, we're, we're on the Civic Center, aren't we?
I think that's what you said.
Yeah, yeah, let's try to get to public buildings first, and then, that's okay, that's all right, Tony. It's been a long day, we all understand.
Tony, hang out with us a little longer.
But if you have any questions and building managers.
Good afternoon. But Tony's point was, he also has some line items in there.
Okay, under, any questions under the Civic Center budget?
Going back to revenue on the Civic Center?
We cut that dramatically, oh, not on the Civic Center, it was the Omen, we cut dramatically because of NAI.
Civic Center revenues are on page ten, it's revenue budget.
All right, I'm totally lost here, we jumped around here. Okay, never mind. I guess maybe it was the Omen Arena, and I think you'd answered that question already, NAI.
Right.
But I was thinking that, give me just a second, I'm sorry.
Omen Arena is on page nine.
While he's checking on that, I would like everyone to know that if you're kind of warm right now, the Civic Center and City Hall has an agreement with TVA and a company called Innot. When the load demand is such like it is now, ninety-two, ninety-three degrees, we have agreed to cut back on as much usage in the City Hall Building and the Civic Center, and they implemented that today.
Is there a motion, is there a motion for adjournment?
So, if you're warm, it's because everything has to be reduced tremendously for about two hours a day, from at least two o'clock to four o'clock. So, that's probably why you're a little bit warm here. We have agreed that these two buildings to reduce our energy usage during this time of the day, probably tomorrow and the next day. I just want to give you a heads up as to what's going on.
Thank you, Marv.
All right.
Anything with Civic Center, Omen Arena?
He's still looking.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Oh, okay. Miss Tennessee also, which is within two weeks. Any question?
Year-to-date revenues on Civic Center seem to be down by a little bit.
Yes, as with everything else, I've been talking to a lot of promoters, and a lot of them are still gun-shotted for us trying to make commitments to bring in anything with the economy as it is. We have had a couple of events that have done very poorly. Promoters wanted to try, and even with good advertising, the support, but just not here in Jackson. And that's why you see what you see now, for it being low. We haven't had any big, major events, we've had Bill Cosby event, you know, for Lambeth, that was a sell-out. The Symphony does goods on there, but any outside promoter, whatever, they're, they're really. really hesitant right now. Economy, economy is not where they wanted to be yet. That's why.
The, by the way, the Cosby hasn't, the Cosby Center program hasn't shown up on budget, is that correct?
It, it was not already.
It was now, now that was just something for Lambeth, went directly to Lambeth, yes. We just sold the tickets for them.
Okay, you have the questions for most? If not, thank you, sir.
All right. Good evening.
Thank you. Fairgrounds, down 7% on their budget. Any questions, Fairgrounds? If not, the NED, any questions, down 5.55% on their budget? Okay, Tony, I think you're up now. And we can start, Tony's budget on what page?
Tony's budget starts on page? Page 51. Sorry, page 50, Recreation Park.
Fifty.
I have a question, if I may, Tony, and it's not really, really relative to a budgetary item, but what is the shape of TR White physically, as, as building, one, two? What type of programming are you doing this summer?
The building is, of course, an older building, and right now, the problems that we're having has to do with the chiller system, and we do have that in the Capitol, there was a component in the Capitol for the chiller in terms of keeping it cool, but in terms of the aging of the building, it's a lot of glass, a lot of energy escapes. We changed the front door system a few years back, but we actually had had a plan to go into a cubicle door where you go in, and then you go through another set of doors, and we took that out, you know, for some budget concerns and the space, but overall, it's still an old facility, there are a lot of issues in AD accessibility, handicap accessibility, because we were grandfathered in, but other than that, it's a pretty solid building, it's just old and antiquated, actually. We just have to keep it clean and best we can.
There's the three items that Tony was addressing, about $14,000 for the boiler-
Yeah. It's a boiler system, and it's, it's an old boiler system, and we've gotta really look at it.
Relative to the program?
Programming, we always have our summer program and our summer night basketball program, which is a scholarship program that we solicit funds from businesses, because we can't give money for scholarships from government.
Is the pool gonna be open?
But the, it's, the scholarship fund is, it's been used, pretty maintained pretty good, and we're getting good contributions from, from some of the local individuals.
Is the pool gonna be open?
Pool to be open, we continually have a pool open. Gillum League Baseball continues to, it's peaked, but it continues to function. We have a sizable number of kids in it, and our summer camp program has about 230 kids this year.
How long does that program run?
Eight weeks, eight weeks, and then we have one at Westwood that we started a couple of years ago. Summer night basketball, we changed the name because that was a copyrighted name, and they sent a letter out from NARPA saying we need to stop calling it midnight basketball, so we just changed the name and same concept, so those things are taking place.
Okay, thank you.
Tony, on the, the golf course lease that we have zero, refresh my memory on that, they've, they've gotta make like a gajillion dollars or something before they actually give you kickbacks?
Well, they took that out of my budget, and that's handled not by us anymore.
Okay.
Golf course has its own section this year, the management companies, so that's been taken out of companies, and you'll notice that, yes, under public facilities.
Okay, we'll get to that one later then? Okay, okay.
Are there any questions on recreation or athletics, park maintenance, groundskeeping, which is the core of Tony's responsibilities, in addition to the, the buildings, which we'll identify?
I can say, what, one of the things that we, we, we are doing, and we continually do to help us offset some of our programming, we're in strong partnerships with Boys and Girls Club, with the school system, to do a lot of joint, joint programming, so there are plenty of kids for us to service, so we kinda partnership with them and a lot of different groups, so that we can at least get some programming across sections, across the city.
Condition of Cypress Grove, can you give me a?
Well, right now, it's down, because the storm that came through took a section of the boardwalk out, and we can't make a move until risk management gets the adjuster out there and, and takes a look at it and, and get us a cost of what needs to be done, and then we're gonna start replacing those boards. But it, the bird raptures weren't damaged, it's just a section of the boardwalk from the previous storm, a few months back, blew across it, and it's just, we had taped it up, and people were, they wanna walk on it, so we had to keep it closed down, because then it flooded on this last deal, so until we get it all fully repaired, we'll get it back open again, hopefully in the next month, so.
How long you think that will take?
Hopefully within the next month, so, vows here, I don't-
Vows here.
Yeah, so it's in, it's in her, involved in her camp right now.
You've got 30 days, you hear that?
No.
I guess the, one question I did have is on recreation revenue and community center revenue, they're both down $6,000, $7,000, we just anticipate-
What, Bennett Center?
I'm, I'm sorry, on the revenue side of it, on recreation revenue and the community service, or community center revenue, they're both down $6,000, $7,000, which is anticipating-
Yeah, well-
Miss reimbursement for?
Activities, people are tending to, a lot of our program, and the soccer program, we had a drop in participation. In terms of community center rentals, they're down. People are just kinda holding on to their money in terms of programming. A lot of them are letting the kids keep their kids, and it's just one of those things.
There, at this time, if I could be heard?
Sure.
Tony, Tony's finished?
Well, y'all have a question on Capitol?
Capitol?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Capitol.
Did you buy a keel last year? Keel, how do you pronounce it?
Kiel.
Kiel.
No, we didn't, we didn't buy one last year.
Huh?
No, we didn't buy one last year. It was the year before last.
Okay.
And they tend to get used a lot.
Okay.
And we needed another one.
They just got it to your life or so, or we're just getting an extra one?
Getting an extra one.
Okay.
Because ceramic is very, very popular.
The popcorn popper goes where?
Popcorn popper is going to be for the recreation department. When we do, we do the moves in the park, portable ones, the moves in the park is so popular and-
Electric?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or it'll be a portable one.
You get two?
No, you just-
And then the portable arrow sign, those have been a good thing, we've, we've been, had an old one, and we use it to highlight what we have going on in the park. We set them up like you see one at Conga Park. Well, we also share that with athletics or tennis events, and so whenever they have something, we don't have another one for, you know, if we're doing something at another location, so.
Don't get ugly.
We talked about, well, Conga Park, the tennis center, we're gonna place the carpet in the office, and then also the roof there, and we're gonna resurface some courts, got some complaints at North Park by some cracking, and so we're gonna resurface some of those tennis courts.
Did you repair the ice machine?
I promise that we're-
The Conga Park, the ice machine, did you repair it?
Did we repair it? I'll, I'll check with Robert, I don't know if it, I didn't know it was out, so.
It's always out.
Always out.
It's an every-year event.
Now, you may have noticed something on there that you hadn't seen in terms of some years, some playground equipment on the school properties, you may think that they belong to the school system, but those playgrounds were purchased with U, U, U-FAR funds, they were urban, there was a program a few years back, they would buy playground equipment for urban parks, and it's still our baby, and so some of them are very old and outdated, and we've got to update them, even though we don't technically own the schools anymore, but the playgrounds are still ours, so.
On the, on the Westwood Gardens Tennis Center, since I'm a main contributor to, I'm 10% of what your revenue probably is, I thought we already replaced the rugs.
This is, this is at Highland Park.
It says Westwood.
Oh, Westwood.
Yeah, it says $3,000.
No, we didn't. According to talking to Heath, they, they didn't replace them, or they worn out.
Maybe they got something else in mind.
Yeah, I think he's got something else in mind.
You been spilling a lot of stuff in there for him?
Not lately.
Yeah, according to him.
And the score, post scoring system?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll talk to Heath.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other question, Tony? How, how many, how many more would we have passed? I know we have the Sportsplex that we need to-
The Sportsplex is the next major one, the debt service fund, which I've partially covered in the bond issue.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's-
So really, just two more, two more, one department and one, one issue, the debt service fund.
Yeah, golf course.
It, was there any, yeah, is any discussion? Page 61 is the-
Page 61.
Is this under, is this under Tony?
Page 60, it's Department 444.
I'll say it, okay, 60, yeah.
Or is it separate? It's not under Tony, it's separate?
It's, it's separate.
Okay. 61?
Page 60.
Sorry.
Yeah, just refresh my memory on-
The $50,000, page 6,000 goes to, to lease company, the agreement was that we give them 2012 each month. $18,000 goes for us to pay the third, pay what on some equipment we've bought, that we let, 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 and it leaves us $6,000 remaining.
Okay, and then once they raise $2 million in golf fees or whatever, then they'll start paying lease feedback? I don't know if that amount's right, but, okay.
Now, all those expenditures will be coming out of the Kate Campbell Robertson Fund, so really, there'll be no public fund going into the golf courses.
There'll be an entry from the trust fund to cover this.
So we'll have revenue, $50,000 in revenue from the trust fund?
You might want to tell them Saturday, I don't know if we can do it by noon.
Oh, it, it is Saturday?
At 8:30, sir. Go ahead and break shot.
Free beer, hot dogs.
Okay, that ought to be coming to show?
Free hot dogs for sure.
Okay, so we still, okay, Al, let me, let me make sure, we still, from this point then, we still have the Sportsplex and the debt service fund to, to discuss. It may be, my, my preference would be to have some additional council people here for the vote on the tax rate and to approve the budget. Is there a suggestion on what?
Mr. Mayor, if I could be heard, I, I'd like to make a motion for recess.
Okay, any, what, what date? Let's, let's tie the date down if we can. I, I assume from this point, we're probably within, what, maybe an hour or less of, unless, and, and plus, I think it gives staff some time to chase down some running rabbits that we, that we had to, had to try to corral today.
Friday at night. We have the second hearing planned for next Tuesday.
Right, yeah, we just need to finish up our first reading, and if we go into recess, I think that would, that would handle that. We'll just reconvene out of recess on whatever date you guys think we can, been one suggestion over here, it's nine o'clock Friday?
I'll second that.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Best we can do right now? Okay, okay, there is a-
We'll give you enough time if we have any changes to fix things for the fall.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Y'all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, then we're in recess until nine o'clock? Yes.
Please. I only have one.
I didn't. He whacked it last time.
I know.
Okay, we'll reconvene the council from recess and chair, and if you would indicate that we have two council members absent, that's Councilman Hayes and Councilman Brooks. And I think we're ready to go with Sportsplex, is that where we ended up?
Mayor, I kinda did a little checkoff list here. Everywhere that I checked, hopefully the council was satisfied with the presentations, the explanations. I will come back and do another one on debt service. We covered it partially when we did the bond issue, but I'll explain a little bit further. So coming on down now, and let me just grab the 440 landfill first, that is our old city landfill out on Highway 70, and what's in there every year, it shows 60,500, I believe, is simply the cost for keeping the flame burning on the gas that's being emitted, and then the, combined with the state TDEC regulations as far as the tests that have to be done monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, so that's really a no-brainer, it's, it's there and we have to deal with it. We do have a reserve for post-closure cost, that's a couple hundred thousand, isn't it, Karen, I'm trying to think, so we're, we're in great shape.
I got one question on that one. We're showing on that one, the income, the transfer from other funds, $65,000, which fund is that coming from?
Health and sanitation.
Okay.
Okay, so now, if no one has anything else, we'll get Ricky Yates up here and address the one remaining department, or really, it's a separate fund, it's an enterprise fund, the Sportsplex, and you have the detail in the back, as we pointed out, so I'll let Ricky start off. I'll tell you what, I'll just go ahead and do several introduction here on the Sportsplex revenues, and let me, if you don't mind, Ricky?
Absolutely.
Since I was somewhat instrumental in how we were gonna finance these 17 fields. Let's see if I can zero it in. This one I highlighted, it was my highlighter, it made it worse, but I wanted to address the major sources of revenue here, and the-
We got the monitors going.
Everybody ready?
Missing the monitors here, let me check.
Oh, okay. There are two sources of what we call tax revenue, and basically, in April of '05, there was an inter-local agreement between the city and county on the hotel motel tax, and that's the first item, and once it hits $975,000 in collections, total collections, then the Sportsplex receives the benefit of everything else. It's done on a calendar year basis, and as you can see, we only budgeted $310,000 because of the two previous years, which were down years, '08 and '09, calendar years, and then we've actually received in $376,000, so we're ahead of the game, and we feel comfortable in the $400,000 that we budgeted. And secondly, is the state shared sales tax, and that's a two-pronged thing. We recover the sales tax off of the concessions and the gate revenues inside the park, and then we had state legislation passed, and that's, I forget the bill number, but it's Senate Bill 2310 that was passed, and it gives us the viability to get the, the local option sales tax off of the 58 acres in the development there. Gary Taylor's 58 acres that is retail, our 58 or 68 acres was for the Sportsplex. So those are two big revenue numbers. This is actually working the way it was planned, the exit 85, the growth is phenomenal, we're probably five years ahead of where the develop, developers thought we would be, so you can see that that's providing a big chunk of- So you can see that that's providing a big chunk of revenue for the Sportsplex. And again, if you remember, the pro-pharma that we presented when we asked for approval on the Sportsplex was, showed that in the upfront years, we were relying on sponsorships, which were over five hundred thousand the first year, and the West Tennessee Healthcare in lieu of, that they pay us, which is a two hundred thousand men, up to a million max, based on their return on investment. We relied on that in the early years, and then in the outline years, the growth is coming through on the state shared sales tax.
Question on, you, you said the sales tax from the concessions all goes to the Sportsplex? And from where else?
The gate.
The gate and the sales tax?
The gate and the concessions and the gift shop all generate retail revenue, which is, you know, there's a sales tax on that.
And a hundred percent of that goes to the Sportsplex?
The local option portion does. No, I'm sorry, a hundred percent does.
Okay, okay.
But then in the fifty-eight acres, which is, let's say, the Gary Taylor development, for lack of a better term, the local option tax off of those sales dollars goes to the Sportsplex.
Okay, and, and that's the council approved us doing that on, as far as the, the hundred percent of concessions? I think that was throwing me off a little bit on the sales tax end of it.
Yes, that was all approved back in April or May of oh-five.
Okay.
And it's actually written in the inter-local agreement also. So, and let me qualify just a little bit. We have a, an oversight committee that Mayor Gist has appointed three members, and Mayor Harris, three. We get together annually and review, and we make sure that these tax dollars are going to the debt issue and not to operations, because that was the design of the local, inter-local agreement. The hotel motel tax started in January of oh-seven, and it ends in December of two thousand and sixteen. Whether the debt is paid off or not, it was a ten-year agreement. The state shared taxes, you look in the, the Senate Bill twenty-three-ten, it's, it continues until the debt is retired or until thirty years, so we'll retire the debt for more than thirty years, but just to differentiate there. We come down, another item to highlight is the West Tennessee Healthcare in lieu of that both the county and the city get, and we have chosen to, to apply that to the Sportsplex, we, you being the council. We come down to the other revenues, and I'll let Ricky address the tournament fees and gate and et cetera.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Just want to share just a, a couple of highlights for you so far this year. I did that last year and want to do it again this year, and a couple of lowlights. We've had, had, have had two storms, straight line winds come through, significant damage out there, some scoreboard damage, some fence damage, garbage cans, et cetera. So we have gone through two of those. We seem to be in a place that pulls that wind out there. But basically, those are the, the lowlights. Just want to share with you, in two thousand and eleven, we scheduled forty-one baseball and softball tournaments. We are hosting adult softball, Dixie girls and boys, baseball and softball during the week. Special needs group now has moved out to the West Tennessee Healthcare Sportsplex, and we'll, we'll eventually and hopefully build a special needs field out there. We're presently are using our fields. And this year, for the first time, we're glad to announce, I, I wasn't sure if Tony was going to say anything about it, but we are going to host for about half their season the JRPD Coach Pitch and Tee Ball League. They presently play out at North Park, and they're going to be playing some of their, we've been working out an agreement with them to come over and play some at the Sportsplex. A lot of parents wanted to come and, and kids be involved over there. We have just signed a contract with the SCAC, Southern Collegiate Athletic Conference, which is a Division III NCAA conference softball. They're going to host their two thousand and twelve conference softball tournament at the Sportsplex. This group, some of the, some of the colleges you'll recognize, Rhodes College, Birmingham Southern, Suwannee, and there's three teams from Texas, one from Indiana and one from Georgia, and they will be coming in in April of next year for a one-year contract, hopefully to, to move that on even further out. Also, we're working with the Trans-South Conference, a conference you may be a little bit more familiar with, that hosts Union, Freed Hardman, Bethel, Trebek and Nazarene. We're working, and, and working up a contract with them, hopefully that they'll have their two thousand and twelve conference tournament next year. We did bid on the NAI National Tournament. When the basketball left us, we wanted to jump right on board, and we did bid and had representatives from the NAI here, and of course, that was awarded to Gupshaw's this year. So we're again in the running for that, and we will constantly stay at that point. And then finally, in that area, we have our Second Annual Girls World Series that will be here again in July. Just again, to highlight these last four weekends, to kind of give you an idea of the teams coming in. Four weeks ago, we had eighty-six teams from five states here. We can pass that, with sixty-three teams with four states. This weekend, we have eighty-eight teams from four states coming in. Next week, we're projecting at this time, it doesn't close, but we'll have about seventy teams, and that is combined baseball and girls softball. Any questions that you all have? I'd rather do it that way, and we can highlight some things in here, but, but again, if there are questions that you might have, I'd be glad to entertain them.
The only, the only thing that kind of jumped out at me was the gift shop sales. Y'all are anticipating they're going to go up a hundred and, or about fifty thousand?
We, to Councilman, to, our first year, we budgeted six thousand dollars for this, and it has just taken off this past year. One of, one of the reasons our, our Sportsplex capital is up so far, we've, we've had to buy a second gift shop for, for that, and it's just continuing to rise, and we feel that, that's, that's a, really, with the folks that are running that, my gift shop manager's doing a great job. She knows what to get for these kids and for the parents. It's amazing, they walk in the gate and they're not headed to the field first, they're going to the gift shop.
I guess we're targeted to do a hundred and fifty this year already, though, because I was looking at the current yours, we're at ninety-seven for, okay.
Yes, we've got several tournaments left before the end of the, of the fiscal year.
Great.
I'm out there every other weekend, so I know what you're talking about. It's absolutely the truth, it's unbelievable.
It's crazy.
Yeah. It's because that's the first thing I hear, I hear when someone come in, we need to go in here, Dave, you know? And they're coming out with all kind of paddle balls and whatnot and different things, unbelievable.
Our gift shop manager, Sandy Self, is, she's tremendous. She does a good job.
Just to give you an idea, put it in dollars terms, I think people tend to forget, myself included, the size of this operation. We're talking annual revenues of two-point-three million dollars, and that's why we've set it up, along with ATA, as an enterprise fund. It's a standalone fund. Most other cities have their parks in with Parks and Rec as part of the total operation. And we do want to emphasize, I think Ricky already mentioned it, but three or four nights a week, we are serving as a park, literally, for the Dixie youth and the special needs children and.
Adult softball.
Adult softball, right. So probably, if you looked at hours played, forty percent of the time probably would be for non-travel ball, serving as a park.
We have, we have several of our fields that are playing seven days a week during the tournament time starts, and then the league plays, we're playing seven days a week.
And just to give you an idea of where we stand on the debt, because we talked about the inter-local agreement and the state legislation that provides for a means of assisting in paying that off, you can see that roughly between principal and interest, we're talking eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year. That has enabled us, we started out, of course, this is thirteen and a half million dollar project, since then, we've added some additional buildings and things, so just off the top of my head, I'd say it's probably a fourteen million dollar investment. We started off with a debt of nine million, six million on capital outlay notes with Bancor South. That now is down to three million after this month closes out, because we paid a half a million dollars ahead, in other words, we paid it on the back end. Then we have roughly, we started out with three-point-two million dollars. That was part of our Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund debt that was going to be used out there on Canalco Drive to construct the softball field initially, but then we decided that that really wouldn't bring in revenue, that wasn't what we needed, and this travel ball option came up. So three-point-two million dollars is actually buried in the other bond issue dollars. But you can see we're making tremendous progress as far as paying off our debt. If anybody has any questions on the expense side, I think Ricky's prepared to, to answer those.
I have a couple on those, on the, I'm doing, Karen, this is on the salaries again. The, the salaries stayed pretty flat, but the benefits went up sixty-three thousand. Check that, make sure that looks okay. That just was a pretty big jump there for the salaries to stay flat, the benefits to go up that much. The other question I had was on the.
Randy, let me just say, that's comparing budget to budget. If you take the current FY twelve budgeted benefits to the salaries, it's like forty-two percent, which I think is very realistic. I think last year, we may have under budgeted. So it's comparing budget to budget, not budget to actual, so I think it's okay.
Y'all, y'all were trying to do it to actual as opposed to budget then, which is the way we should be doing it?
Well, what I'm saying is this comparison here that shows a sixty-three thousand dollar increase is comparing FY twelve budget to FY eleven, and I think in eleven, we actually under budgeted for benefits.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that, that puts the employee benefits at forty-three percent, which that would be, I'm assuming the Sportsplex has got a lot of part-time people, or I could be assuming wrong there. That's why I was wondering, that, that percentage looked a little bit high, but, maybe, y'all, y'all can look at it. I just want to bring the attention. The other question I had was on the, the, we're anticipating the tournament fees are going to be down a little bit, but then the, the up and scorekeeper fees are going to be up.
Let me share mainly about the umpire fees. We had to go up on, on our umpires in our older groups. We're trying to stay, we have, we have complexes that we constantly, we get folks from West Tennessee, Mississippi, that come up here to work, and of course, there, there are some complexes, complex in South Haven, one in Memphis, and so we're trying to, we've held it as long as we can, so, with the older groups, and so we're going to have an increase there. That, that may be a little bit too high, Councilman. We're, that, that is in conjunction with the number of teams that you might have, and so even year by year, it's, it's, I don't call it a guess, but we're trying to get it as educated as possible, so that may still be a little bit high when it comes to that, but we're just wanting to make sure we had it covered at that point.
The ones that you're bringing from other areas is, because we're having higher quality games, we're putting on there, we got to pay ups a little bit more, is?
Right, and notice there's no traveling box, it's per game fees, but it's just, we're trying to get to where they're paying everywhere as far, and we're not just adding ourselves by what they pay, but again, we want to get in the ballpark, if you will.
Okay.
To make sure that we, but there is some.
Good announcement.
Thank you. And let me say this, too, there is one light, so if you see imbalance at this point with our budget, we are going to be adding a line item. I think Karen's going to do that for us in between our two meetings for SOD, so if you did see a number imbalance there.
I think we got to add fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
That'll be on the list that Karen is keeping up with.
Okay, are there changes that will happen?
Right.
Question, and I'll go back to Randy's question regards to the employee benefits. If I'm correct, we're going to budget, we're on a budget right now to, to pay somewhere around a hundred and nine thousand dollars on employee benefits for the remaining part of the year? If we're still on the ten-month, is that correct?
This is going to be page one expenditure budget item, without my glasses on, four-four-five oh-five one-thirty?
I think that's what Karen said, she was going to check the calculation.
And I, and I think it's at a hundred and nine thousand dollars, which we, if it's correct and we're going to remain, are we, are we looking at more employees?
We, we would be part-time, Councilman, but not full-time.
And you got to remember, Frank, that the activity is skewed towards May and June as far as the number of tournaments, the number of people, et cetera.
Well, I think that what stirred Randy was the fact that if we're, we're right now looking at a hundred and nine thousand dollars with expenditures, but we're budgeting a hundred and sixty-nine thousand in benefits, that's what you're going to check?
Yes, but as, as.
And it's skewed a little bit.
Mr. Lefen said, May and June, you will have a lot more part-time people than you did, a whole lot more. So you can't really divide it by ten to say that it was May and June.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to, we're, we're seasonal staffing.
But I will double check.
Yeah, we're seasonal staffing, or at least budgeting, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ricky? His capital, by the way, is not in the regular capital fund, because this is a enterprise fund, and Ricky, you might want to address, just to tell them what's in here, sixty-five thousand roughly.
We have, of course, with, with equipment, it's probably our primary, the one of the sixty-five. We've got thirty-one thousand dollars for utility, one heavy-duty utility cart, two mid-duty utility cart, of course, with less trade-ins. We've got forty-five hundred dollars for a side cutter. We've borrowed Parks and Rec, and we need one just about full-time. We are adding something I think will be very good for our teams, and they've asked for it, is twenty-five thousand dollars for two batting cages where they can go and warm up before the game, and so we're very excited about that, that we're able to add that this year, and that, we, we, that's been a request really from day one. We do have twenty-five hundred dollars in some gutters that we didn't put on originally on the building, and then a couple of warmers for, for the kitchen. It's a total out to sixty-five one-fifty. That could be less with the trade-ins for the equipment.
Question, as an enterprise fund, are those capital expenditures coming from the city general fund, or are they coming from the enterprise fund itself?
He has to pay for them out of the operation.
Okay, we're good on Sportsplex?
You need to put up ten older stands where the grandparents won't get hot.
You make me bring you water every once in a while now, so, just kidding.
Okay, thank you, Ricky. Before we get to the next one, speaking of grandparents, I want to acknowledge Mr. Holt right down here in the front row, who is observing council action for perhaps maybe a future run in elected position. He is the grandson of Councilman David Cisco. Welcome.
I'm very proud of him. He's a straight A student.
Okay, Al.
So that really, if my checklist is correct, that takes care of all the departments. I did say I would come back and look at debt service from a little different perspective than we looked at it before when we were talking about the bond issue. You should have a section in your, in the back, again, Karen, it's entitled.
It's in a separate section right before you do other funds called debt services.
Right back there with the capital and the other fund. And basically, just to reemphasize, when I put up the pie charts, yes, I guess that was Tuesday, and we talked about the shaded area going to debt service, this just reiterates, and you can see that we, on total delinquent tax collections, some two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of that pie that's in the shaded area comes to the debt service, and then on the current property tax, some five million dollars. So that's a, a big part of the, I'll go and get the rest for y'all, so then the other piece of the pie is the tax equivalents, which is about eight-hundred and some odd thousand. So in total here, this might look a little bit crazy, we're showing seventeen million dollars in revenue. About six-point-seven of that is from the taxes collected and the apportioning out, but the main portion that bumps this number up is when we borrow money, if we do go ahead and borrow ten million too, it comes into debt service and then goes out to the capital funds. That's why that number looks very large, seventeen million dollars. And then as we get over and we look at the retirement of our debt, it's what we've already discussed before, basically. Basically, we're paying about rounded 4 million a year on principal and about 2.7 million on interest. And then down here at the bottom is the transfer that we would have going to the capital fund of the borrowed funds. Any question on the debt service? If not, Mayor, I think we have-
What, excuse me, how what will be the total in debt of the city if, if the 11 million is approved?
Let me-
And I apologize, you may have already discussed that.
I did, but I think I've got that chart. I may not have, but I can get you that number. I want to make sure I quote you the current. We have reduced over the last four years, I can remember from the chart that we presented Tuesday, we've actually paid off 10 million in principal, but then we borrowed, what, post 11 million, and we borrowed six new money in '09. So it comes out, you know-
Is that what you're looking for?
Randy's got it right there. So we come out with a net reduction in debt of 5 million. Any other questions?
Council, have any additional questions? Val, I think we, when we ended our session Tuesday, we had a number of items that we were going to try to chase down. And to my recollection, we only had one change to the budget with, which has been provided to you, and that's the travel for council. And I think your council members are aware of that change, and I assume that has been plugged into the-
The increase on the decrease side, if you remember with Winanda in central dispatch, she had overstated her salaries by 44,000. So that's coming out. And then Karen, you're going to move fire department 43,000 to a grant. 43,000 of what Chief Pearson had in his training budget actually goes, goes away, so to speak, because it's a loss.
Those were the only changes that we're aware of of the budget that's been presented?
Karen will have a list on next Tuesday that would take us from the first hearing to the second.
Okay.
But you've covered the major items.
Okay, all right. Okay, if there are any additional questions on the, on the budget, now would be a good time to-
Mayor, I think we're going backwards here, but I missed, I guess, when we were talking about Pringles Park, or if we ever talked about Pringles Park.
We didn't because nobody asked, but I'll be glad to.
I'm on page 60 of the expenditure-
Yes.
-on the city. And we're showing some, some new, new items there in Pringles Park, sponsorship of Pringles Park, expense, 15,000, repair maintenance of 35,000. Is that just in the new contract that we did with them, or?
Well, it's, some of it is, but let me just address, for example, the sponsorship. That's just, I guess it was last week or the week before, we had the Ohio Valley Conference Championship Games at Pringles Park, and that's schools like UT Martin and Eastern Kentucky and et cetera in that conference. And it's not in the agreement, but we have opted since we no longer have the NAI, we signed a three-year agreement. This is the second of those three years.
It's finished.
And that's cost for the banquet and the fees that the Ohio Valley Conference administered fees.
Okay, so.
And this will be the third year. This would be the final year coming up.
Okay.
Last year it was shown under community development. This year, I thought it was more appropriate to put it under Pringles Park.
Okay, so that's what we're paying them to bring the tournament here?
Basically, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Economic development.
And then the repair maintenance of that, is that?
Well, what is happening in repair and maintenance is we have a park that is basically 12 or 13 years old. For example, we just recently were out over a week as far as being able to water the fields. We've had banks of lights go out. The scoreboard is currently out, the video board portion of it, and as that park matures, there's going to be more things that need repair. It's still one of the top parks in the league. We paid 8 million for it. We've been told it would take 25 to 30 million to build that park today. So we have a jewel there, but with age, it's going to require more maintenance.
Hal, our bonded indebtedness at this point is what, three, roughly 3 million?
Roughly 3 million, and in the next three and a half years, or by the time your term is over, we will have it fully paid for.
Question on the Community Development Fund, which I don't know whether you can answer or not, I may just have to ask after the fact between now and the next meeting, but the home program income, we're budgeting 339,000, and then we're budgeting program income of 507,000. Is that repayments for previous loans that we've done, or is that CDBG, do CDBG money coming in? Or do you have any idea?
CDBG money, is that number right, Karen?
That's new money coming in then?
Dave Ralston's budget or his plan that you approve annually.
Okay.
Really, those funds are, they're under our umbrella, but we don't really interact and receive funds and pay out. That's all really over there.
Okay. I'll contact him and ask him then on that then. On the solid waste collection fund, we're showing about 50% of the revenue coming from fund balance.
Are you on?
I'm sorry, the expenses coming from fund balance.
Are you on 131 now?
Yes, 131. I'm just jumping around in confusion. Yeah, on 131, from the solid waste collection fund.
Well, the solid waste collection fund, and I don't have that right in front of me, but 90% of that should come from the garbage billing to residential and commercial. I'm not sure where you see that coming from fund balance.
Well, the proposed budget on 37,900 from fund balance, you're showing 543,000? Are you with me there, Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any idea on that, why that's?
Can't find it now.
Okay.
Well, that is the portion that we were not able to cover through billing to the customers.
Okay, well, I guess that was my question, is that, is that we're trying to bill the customer the exact cost on the solid waste fund, pretty much?
Right.
Okay.
And they've got a reserve, a fund balance of like a million three that has accumulated over time.
Okay, that's where we probably overbill, so we're reducing now, we're billing the-
Not overbill, but you have to estimate what your expenses are going to be.
Estimated, so we're trying to bill the customers less now because we've got that overage in there to even out because we don't need a huge-
We have some unknowns each year, like the fuel surcharge is coming back strong.
Right, we've got to keep a fund balance to cover that, right? Well, you think, feel like we've got too big of a fund balance now. I guess my question is-
Not too big, it's, it's just we have enough there that we can draw from without passing on additional charges to the customer.
Okay, okay. But we're not going to pull our fund balance down too much by doing that. Okay. That was, yeah, that was what I was leading up to then.
And we have tried to stay away from increasing the garbage collection rate. We've tried just to do it, you know, three or four years, not come back and do it each year as we incur fuel charges, et cetera, fuel surcharge.
Okay. But we are watching that so that we can adjust the fees as we need to periodically. Okay, I'm jumping over now to the police drug fund. We're showing, police drug fund, revenue of 94,000 and expenses of 30,000, which leaves, okay, which leaves us a net income, if you want to say it that way, of 64,000.
That's because of seizures that are coming in. These are rewards that they're anticipated to receive this year, so the revenue is higher than what they expect to expend. Many times the seizures take three to four years, they sit in court before they're awarded the money for the seizures. So they're anticipating some large seizures coming in, and they just didn't have expenses to allocate it for. So it'll go into their reserve balance.
Okay, so that reserve balance, we'll use that at some point in time.
Yes, we will.
Okay, that's why I was going to ask him. And that will be used by the police drug fund.
A few years ago, when we didn't have money in capital for cars, they actually took some money from the drug fund and bought. You can use them as one-time expenditures with the approval of the state, so it actually helped out some capital expenses.
And then my last question was in the landfill fund. We're showing 65,000 as an income coming from a transfer from other fund?
That's-
Where'd you say that was?
Health and sanitation.
Okay, but we don't have a health and sanitation fund.
Solid waste.
Okay, okay, solid waste fund, okay. Okay, I guess I looked at solid waste, I didn't see that on the line items there, but I'll look back and see if I can track that down.
If it's not, it could be included in another item, but I will double-check that and let you know for the second meeting, second hearing.
Yeah, when you said health and sanitation, well, we don't have a health and sanitation fund. Okay. And that one, solid waste collection fund, we probably should rename to Health and Sanitation Fund. It used to be, but it includes animal control, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Which is really not solid waste, so, but I guess we all know what it is then. Okay. I'm done. Sorry.
If there are no further questions, I guess we need to consider a motion for item one under first reading.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
To my fellow council members, before we consider that, that item, I have a statement and a summary with respect to the capital item under the police department taser usage. We understand and we acknowledge that there is a tool for safety, and it's to enforce the law and to arrest the perpetrator. We're sorry this morning that no law enforcement officers are present, but I have met with and talked with several officers and department chiefs in the police department. I am, I am convinced through much prayer and through much deliberation that it is an effective tool if used properly. The thing that really convinced me is that the cameras are in the tasers, and that will run checks and balances as far as improper uses. Also, the chiefs have stated that there will be in the patrol cars cameras, which we have been a strong advocate for, for the last four or five years. I was really concerned about the checks and balance. Now, with respect to injuries and litigation, Nashville recently had an incident with a taser where the officers tased an individual 53 times. 53 times they tased that individual. Also, in Myland, if you remember, the young man had a hidden medical condition, and he was tased and killed. If we use the common sense approach when using the effective tool of tasers, I think we'll be all right. I am concerned about the training aspect of it. When you say a two-day training, I'm wondering if that's going to be enough. I was hoping some law enforcement agencies, people be present this morning. The effect on end results is that we want to protect our officers and also protect the perpetrators whom they are trying to arrest and apprehend. We want to call for a semi-annual report on the use of the tasers in the Jackson Police Department, a semi-annual report to the council, so we can remain abreast of how they're being used. With the eye in the sky when I say that, with the camera in the taser itself, and with cameras in the patrol cars, it provides a mechanism for checks and balances, and I was really concerned about that. I would say that, Mr. Mayor, to my fellow council members, that yes, I have reservations, but I understand the uses of the tasers, and I will support the tasers in the capital outlay budget of this year. But I am hoping that we, that we use the common sense approach, the officers will when it come to it, and that remains to be seen. And I am hoping that in the training aspect, that we go more than this, just the two-day overview of what tasers do. I am hoping, I wish they were here so I could talk with them about it and get some rebuttal and get some, get some statements concerning that. But that's my spiel on the taser aspect in the capital outlay budget.
Okay, thank you, Council. Any other, any other council statement?
Of course, I'm in close with Sheriff's Department, and I questioned Sheriff yesterday on the training issue. And with our department, we're trained on different aspects, different things, temple spray and so forth annually. We get 40 hours of training plus our firearm training. So I questioned him on how this training would be. And the officers that possess these tasers will be not only two-hour training, two-day training that they would have on initial end, they would go through a training once a year. And the officers that do the training, they will go back every two years for additional training, is what I got from Chief Kendrick Tuesday.
Okay. Any other questions or statements by the council before we vote? If there are none, then I think we're ready for a motion to adopt the budget ordinance for 2011, 2012 on first reading. If we can get a motion in the second, then we will have a public hearing on that.
So moved?
A motion.
Second.
A second. Okay, let's, right now, just call for the public hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this Seeing none, we have a motion in the second. Any additional discussion?
The vote is six, yes, and one abstain.
Okay, item, item two, the first readings and the ordinance to set the property tax rate.
Yes, gentlemen, we are not proposing any tax increase. This was the certified rate that we received from the state last, I think it was actually August, July, August, before we got it certified. So there is no change. It's the $1.97. And what is the breakout here to the sinking fund? It's another terminology for debt service. And again, that's the shaded area of the pie chart that I showed you previously. So 38 cents out of every $1.97 that's collected for property tax goes towards our debt service fund.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Just second. Any discussion?
This is the same rate that we used last year, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you, council, and we'll take up the second reading of this ordinance next to your regular meeting. Thank you, and meeting is adjourned.